All right. We have our wayward fifth member.
Hi, Adam.
There he is.
I'm not sure if you can hear us, though.
Good evening, Adam.
I don't think he can hear us.
Adam, we can't hear you. Okay, all right, let us, let us begin. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting, October 12th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first order tonight of business is any changes to the order of the agenda? I'm not proposing any myself. Is there anyone who would like to make any changes?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing none. We will move on now to public comment. Crystal, do we have any callers at the moment for public comment?
Yes, we do have one person. Looks like waiting in the queue. And then we go ahead and let them in and put up the screen. Good evening, caller with a phone number ending in 636. Thank you for joining us this evening. You should be able to unmute yourself. You'll have two minutes to address the council. And at the end of the two minutes, you'll hear a chime indicating that it's time to wrap up. So you should be able to unmute yourself. You might, there you go.
All right, great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Christoph LaBelle. Worked with the Silicon Valley Leisure Group, a regional public policy trade association. And I'm here to talk about our 15th Annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. That's produced by our affiliated C3 Foundation. And so we'd like to invite you and other folks from San Carlos to participate. We also have our Sand Hill Property Company Mayor's Cup Challenge. The idea with this race is that, of course, it'll still happen, but virtually to the state to our community and vulnerable populations. And with ongoing tremendous need in the community, we'd love to have your support to contend for our five local beneficiaries, Second Harvest Silicon Valley, Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Cruz County Health Trust, Health Your Kids Foundation, and Housing Trust Silicon Valley. Over the past 15 years, we've donated $9.6 million to the community, and we're looking to get to $10 million or more this year. So your involvement can truly help us get there. As you may know from past years, our Mayor's Cup rewards mayors, council members, and city managers who register for our base points are awarded for different sorts of outreach you do, whether through newsletters, e-newsletters, and social media. And of course, if you're willing to champion this on behalf of the council, there are points there. San Carlos would be in a category of different cities of similar size, so things like Burlingame, Menlo Park is some of your competitors. Yeah, and I'll send a follow-up email with some more information and collateral tomorrow. So appreciate your time and look forward to whatever support you can provide to our mission of Health Hope in a Home. Thanks so much if you've been able to stay before, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Crystal, are there any other callers that wish to speak?
No, there are no other callers.
All right. Ron, through the chair, I had two very brief comments.
Certainly, go right ahead.
Actually, three. One is, on my end at least, you're actually unusually quiet tonight. I'm not sure what that may be, but if everybody else can hear you, that's fine.
Let me see if I can fix that. Hopefully, that's better.
That is better, yes, thank you. One thing, first thing is for the members of the public watching our meeting, I will be stepping away from the meeting relatively frequently compared to what I normally do. That's not for lack of interest, it's from being in the early stages of recovery from some minor surgery last week, which all went fine, but that's why you'll see me disappear from time to time. I will still be listening to what's happening. And then the other comment I wanted to make is, I'm not sure when and where it happened, but I really am kind of unhappy and wish about the fact that we don't have an opportunity for council members to bring up issues and make comments in the early stages of the meeting. So I'll talk about that more at the end of the meeting, where we actually have it scheduled. But I just wanted to make that note early in the meeting. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mark. All right, we're going to move on to item five, which is the Consent Calendar. Is there any council member wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I would like to pull item H. H is in Harry.
Okay, all right. We have pulled item H. Is there a motion for the rest of the items?
I move to approve city council agenda items A through G. A second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
I will be voting yes on everything except item F as in Frank, on which I will be voting no.
Okay. Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes, and I just have a quick comment at the appropriate time.
Okay. Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right, why don't we? Laura, was your comment on item H or a different item?
It's on a different item.
Okay. Well, if you just have a brief comment, I'm sure that Mark's might take a little bit more time, so if you've got a brief comment, why don't you just go right ahead?
Yeah, sure, thank you. So I just wanted to recognize the reports from the commissions and boards. I noted in this report that there was quite a breadth of work done, that each of the commissions have accomplished. In addition, it appears that attendance is up, so I was very pleased to see that. And the commitment to the community is very inspiring. I'd also like to call out, in particular, the Youth Advisory Committee for their impressive set of goals that have been established around social justice activities for youth, youth and teen mental health and fundraising. All of these tie beautifully to the city's mission and vision, and I look forward to the work that's produced by this very important commission. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Laura. Before we move on, why don't we, why don't we take item 5H now? That's Adopt a Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Enter into a Rent Forbearance Agreement with a Nonprofit Organization Arbor Bay School. Mark, did you want to hear the, any staff presentation on this? Or did you just want to just talk about it a bit?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would appreciate hearing a staff presentation on it, and I do have some questions, but I may have other ones or additional ones based on the staff presentation.
All right. Jeff, who would be handling that?
That would be, Mr. Mayor, that would be somebody from our Community Development Department. Al, are you here to speak to that or introduce?
Sure, I am. Yes, Jeff, I can talk a little bit about it. And then maybe Greg Rubens can assist if necessary. So the Arbor Bay School has asked for, initially, they asked for a 24-month conveyance of the lease and the increases in rent. And it went to you last week, there was a time, and city staff looked at it and changed it to 12 months after consideration and discussions with our legal counsel. And that's where it is tonight. So they're asking for forbearance for 12 months. And really, potentially, that's it. To talk about it in more detail, perhaps we could answer some questions.
I'd just add that there, part of the request, as I understand it, is that the increase would be deferred for the one year. So that has some tail effect over the subsequent years that reduces the income to the city. But other than that, it's, it's just a delayed payment of rent.
Crystal, I don't, I didn't see a note from you. Was there anybody that did want to speak on this item? Any member of the public?
No, I'm not seeing any calls coming in on this.
All right. Mark, I'm sure you have some questions? Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Not sure if this is for Al or for Greg Sol, let them decide, you know, who answers what. Since I didn't see a red line comparing the earlier submission from our last meeting to this one, what specifically were the changes made to the proposed agreement?
It was just a number of months. So it went from 24 months to 12. Are you talking about the dollar value changes?
No, no, I presume the dollar value changes are implied by the, by the time changes. Okay, I guess, I guess my initial question or follow-on question to that is, that does not sound like a typographical change to me. That sounds like a fairly substantive change to the core of an agreement. I mean, you know, most of the words may not have changed, but a very key parameter, kind of the essential parameter of the agreement changed. So I'd like to understand what specifically sparked staff to make that change.
I can speak to that. There was an internal error of communication on our side within staff. The original direction was to bring that item forward with a 12-month recommendation, not a 24-month recommendation. And somewhere between that direction being given and the staff report being written, it was, it was misinterpreted. So it was our error. We caught it just before the last council meeting and pulled it off to make the change.
And there was not, no other impetus to make the change?
No, it was just strictly discovery of the error.
I, I, I guess I'm having a little difficulty accepting that, Jeff, because my understanding from talking to, I think it was Susan Rose, that there had been a fair amount of back-and-forth between Arbor Bay and staff leading up to the submission of the agreement with the 24 months in it. And I mean, I suppose it's possible the review process internally and staff never got to somebody who said, oh, wait a minute, that number's supposed to be 12. But I find that odd. Or is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying. The direction that I gave from the beginning was 12 months, and as it, as it filtered through the organization of the folks that were going to work on it, it somewhere along the line became 24 months. And so that's what they worked on and put together. And then when it, when it came back, it was caught at the last minute, and, and I pulled it off the agenda because that was not my, you know, the staff report represents my recommendations, and that was not my recommendation.
Okay. Well, mistakes can always happen. I guess it's unfortunate, I just want to make the point, it's unfortunate that, that this effectively didn't get caught until after the last minute, when it was actually out in public. And, and I, I, you know, we all have to be careful, I know you know this, Jeff, but I'm going to say it anyway. We all have to be careful about the fact that nobody trusts government to begin with. And, and when we publish something and say that that's what we're going to talk about, and then we pull it off and say it's a typographical error when it's not really a typographical error, it's, it's a miscommunication error. It just, it makes people go, yeah, of course, that's why we can't trust any of these guys. And that just makes all the rest of our jobs a lot harder with everything else we try to do. So I appreciate staff's honesty tonight, at least, in explaining what happened, but, you know, if that, hopefully, that kind of thing won't happen again, but if it does, I would rather the mistake just admitted earlier for what it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. I, hang on a minute, my, my participant hand raising item or feature is somehow malfunctioning, so I just wanted to check and make sure nobody else had any comments.
I'd like to move item 5H to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager into a, into a rate forbearance agreement with the nonprofit organization Arbor Bay School.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right. If there's no other comments, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to item 6A. This is Agenda Setting. These are just items that are considered by the council for placing on future agendas. And we're not going to take any action tonight unless these items are taken at this meeting, but which they will not be. So the first item, the only item on the Agenda Setting is 6A, Consideration of Agendizing an Item Contributing $50,000 to the San Mateo County Childcare Relief Fund to Support San Carlos-Based Childcare Centers. Do we have, well, whose, whose item was this?
Mayor Collins, I can speak to this request. So according to Build Up, San Mateo County, San Mateo County had a shortfall of approximately 24,000 spaces prior to the pandemic. And one in seven residents utilized childcare in order to work full-time in our local hospitals, schools, grocery stores, and other workplaces. When COVID-19 hit, these had to shut down and faced a sudden decrease in revenue that put many of the available spaces at risk. San Mateo County Board of Supervisors leveraged $2 million in CARES Act funding to offer grants to cover operating expenses for both family childcare programs that are run in-home as well as childcare centers. Multi-site agencies were available for one grant. And the program prioritized children's childcare programs that served the most vulnerable in San Mateo County. My interest in bringing this forward tonight is that, my understanding is that there were a number of childcare facilities in San Carlos that applied for these funds, but many were not, many were not funded because they ran out of funds, but they were still eligible for payment or to receive the grants. So from what I can see, that there is still demand, and I respectfully request that my colleagues consider adding this item to an upcoming agenda for consideration.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Vice Member, Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan, I, I think it's a great idea. The only comment I had is I wanted to see if you might be willing to ask that it be agendized without a specific dollar amount, because frankly, I'd like to discuss being higher than 50. But, you know, if we leave the dollar amount out, we're not constrained in terms of what we're going to do.
I would, I would be open to that amendment.
Yeah, I certainly support the, support the idea of putting it on the agenda as soon as possible.
All right. Any other support?
Mr. Mayor, I would fully support this, too. I'm so grateful that the vice mayor brought this up. It was on my to-do list as well. I would like to also ask that we receive a presentation from the San Mateo County Childcare Relief Fund. Just recently, I put the organizers in touch with the Community Foundation of San Carlos, and I think that there's some opportunities that they're investigating there. So I think it would be really helpful if they could come to council and give us a presentation and let us know kind of exactly what the need is right now for our childcare providers here in San Carlos.
All right. Adam, did you want to add any comments? You're muted. You're just, but you're shaking your head, so I assume you're good.
I'm fine with it, yes. I think that's great, and look forward to discussion.
All right. Yes, Mark?
Thank you. Just one other thing sparked by Sarah's comment, which I thought was a really good one. If it were easy enough to do, and I certainly don't want to delay discussion of allocating the additional funds to get this information, I would not mind getting some sense from staff about what the average cost of childcare is sort of per, per child in San Carlos, or a range or whatever, because I learned some information today, which I won't go into because I'm not sure how accurate it is, that I found distressing. So I'd like to see some real information on that.
Okay. Well, I believe it would be unwise for us not to have this discussion. So, sounds like it's on a future agenda. All right, thank you. We will move on now to item seven. We're going to receive an update on the coronavirus. This is going to be by, given by Chief Dury, is that right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's actually going to be given by myself with a real quick update before I turn it over to the chief to give you a police-oriented update that the council had asked for at your last meeting. So if I could get the first slide, please, Crystal, on the Shop Local Campaign. So our communications team, the city's, is working through the city's COVID-19 webpage, which is www.cityofsancarlos.org/coronavirus. We're maintaining a current list of open San Carlos businesses and resources for businesses and workers. These resources and lists are being sent out on a weekly basis in our Community Support Update. The list of open businesses was updated early this month to reflect the most recent data we have. And our plan is to update this list on a bimonthly basis or by request of a, of a local business. Our communications team continues to promote local businesses and worker support programs through social media and newsletter updates, so look for that to continue. Our Parks and Recreation Program and staff are encouraging community members to shop locally at businesses participating in the San Carlos Halloween Decorating Contest this year. Community Development is currently conducting outreach and research. We're taking a look at programs in Laguna Beach, Newport Beach, Pasadena, Redwood City, Oakland, Fremont, and the county of San Mateo, and the state of California for, for their efforts in Shop Local Campaign efforts. We've reached out to the new merged Redwood City-San Mateo-San Carlos Chamber of Commerce to put a meeting together with them so that we could work together on this effort in not only putting together the program, but disseminating the information out to our shared constituencies. So we're, we're working to develop a draft campaign plan. This will be brought before the Economic Development Advisory Committee shortly to get some feedback and fine-tuning before we begin to roll that program out to the community. And we'll provide details to council in upcoming council newsletters, as I've gotten a number of requests over the last week from council for updates on that. So we'll continue to make that an update priority for the city council before it, it goes public. And then finally, our downtown street closure program on Royal Street is being promoted in helping encourage community members to visit, shop, and dine in our downtown. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Dury for his update. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Outstanding. Well, this is our, more or less, how the sheriff's office, the highlights on how we're approaching COVID, where we started and where we are now. Our goal was, when the, the pandemic started, was always to prioritize education in hopes of voluntary compliance with the local health orders. When we started all of this in March, we had many, many health order calls for service while the shelter in place was still in effect, because the health order was a lot more complicated and a lot, there was a lot more parameters. Since the shelter in place provision ended, the health order calls for service slowly diminished. A lot of them were, a lot of ones we were getting at the time, were social distancing-type violations, or just people not wearing masks. Over the past two months, it's really gotten a lot better. We received very, very few calls for service. Everyone we approach, proactively approach, is really in compliant or complies with our request when they are approached. We had a, we've had over the past month or so, issues at Burton Park with different We had a, we've had over the past month or so issues at Burton Park with different young adults or teenagers congregating there on their bicycles and do, and some of them haven't had masks and had masks. And when we approached them, either they put their mask on right away or some of them already had their mask on. So what we do as soon as we go in service, both on day shift and night shift patrol beats, one or two deputies, depending on the call for service we get as we start our shifts, go to Burton Park to make sure we can proactively enforce those before we have to get any type of dispatch calls. As always, we reinforce the goal of the health order and our goal is always to stop the spread of the virus. That's our goal and that's the message that we preach. But I would like to remind everyone in the public especially to when you call us, please either use the 911 line or our office line. Because even though I do appreciate your emails personally and our general email and on our voicemails, we can't really handle the calls for service when they're happening if you leave us that kind of correspondence. So if you see any type of violation or if there's something that concerns you, please call us directly and a unit will be dispatched out there to handle whatever call for service or parameters we have. When the health order started, we issued a lot of warning citations when necessary. But as of late, we've gotten a lot of compliance. Most of the time, we walk up to people and they just have their mask either down around their chin or in their pocket, they forgot to put it on. But most everyone that we come into contact with has their masks. The informational campaigns through city newsletters and social media, we do a lot of social media as far as our, the sheriff's office Facebook and the city does as well, pushing out different campaigns on the importance of the health order, our expectations. And we remind the public of our expectations of voluntary compliance and our goal again is to stop the spread of the virus. Our most recent one we sent out last week was a combination. It talked about the health order, the importance of wearing your mask and social distancing. And it also had a combination of, with parents, please talk to your kids about driving, youth driving and driving safely within, within the city limits. And it also had a little provision about the utilization of fireworks. And it continues to be illegal even after the Fourth of July. And then it comes deputies, all deputies and all patrol and community service officer vehicles and deputies carry disposable masks in order to pass them out to the member of the public that don't have one. So every deputy that's on duty has at least 50 masks in their cars and we pass them out as needed. We have not been, we've hardly been, that started about six weeks ago. The last two weeks, we haven't been passing out any masks because everyone that we come in contact with has a mask or has one with them. And sometimes they just forget to put them on. Our downtown services unit presence on Laurel Street is still in play and it's to remind business owners and patrons of the local health order. It continues to be a successful program, both in enforcement and community engagement, both with our for-all residents, visitors, and business owners. We reinforce the health order and promote safety and we deal with quality of life issues. So that unit or the downtown services unit deputy does a lot of outreach to people that are visiting downtown, especially on the seven, six and 700 blocks where the restaurants are. And they are really gaining compliance. Most people, if not all of them, are wearing their masks as of late. Every now and then, we do get someone that lets us know that there's someone not wearing a mask and the deputy will approach that person, ask them if they have a mask. In nine times out of 10, they have one with them and they don't mask. So that is, and for my last one, for any questions, for any COVID-19 resources specific to the San Mateo County Health Order, just we please, you can either call us or please utilize the county's 211 number and it has all the information that you'll need for any questions you may have. And that ends my presentation. I'll take any questions if you have it.
Thank you, Mark. Excellent presentation. I'm wondering if the reopening of the playgrounds has had any effect on things because I saw a dramatic drop off in complaints from people, you know, about kids congregating around Burton there.
Yes, the calls for service have gone down. That's probably one of the reasons. It's also getting darker later or earlier now. So that's probably it as well. All the schools are in session. That's gone on as well. So, and I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor that our public outreach and our education is making a big effect as well.
I'm sure it is, okay. Mark, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mark and Jeff. Good presentations. I actually had three, I think fairly quick questions, which will actually allow me to bring up the two issues I alluded to earlier that I didn't want to have to wait to the end of the meeting about. But first, Chief, you mentioned about how from a timeliness, a response point of view, you would prefer that people call 911. And I just wanted to make sure that I heard that correctly and that the public hears it correctly, because I've talked to people who have told me, it's like, well, yeah, I see somebody, you know, not social distancing or a restaurateur not doing something right, but I don't feel like calling 911 for that because it's not an emergency. So there's this feeling that it has to be, you know, like armed robbery or something before you call 911. And I'm hoping you can educate people about when they really should use that number.
You can use the 911 line. We have plenty of dispatchers and plenty of 911 lines. You will not tie up any 911 lines or you can always use our business line as well, which goes to our dispatcher. That's 802-4321. So you can use either one, but there's plenty of 911 lines open and plenty of 911 dispatchers to take any type of call.
Thank you. That's, I hope that will be helpful to a lot of people who, as I said, tend to hesitate to call 911. So it's good to hear that you're staffed up to handle that and are prepared to. This next item, I saw just a mention of it on social media. So it is the provenance of it, you can impute yourself, but it was this kind of bizarre story, at least I hope it was bizarre, that somebody had driven a car down the closed portion of Laurel Street. And I was, the other day, curious if, if anybody had heard anything about that, if you had heard anything about that.
I did. The deputies went out, it happened last night around eight o'clock, where a car drove in between our water walls and ran over the A-frame signs indicating the street was closed and drove westbound, or I'm sorry, drove southbound on Laurel from the 600 block, from the beginning of the 700 block to the end of the 700 block and drove out the other way. We do have a vehicle information, we do have suspect vehicle information. We don't have a license plate or anything, but, and we do have a color of the vehicles. So if anyone that is listening tonight has any information on that vehicle or who that was, we would like to hear from you. But we have taken a report and we are doing a current investigation on that.
Thank you for that. I mean, I'm, I'm very sorry to hear that it actually happened and it was not something, you know, fake news made up on social media because it's, it's always been a possibility, but it's extremely disturbing to me that somebody, even if they were inebriated, would do something like that since they're putting significant numbers of people at risk. So I, I hope you were successful in tracking that person down. And that's, that may be a good lead in to my next question, which I know that we've had issues with a small number of restaurateurs sort of not following the requirements or like moving water walls and stuff. And I, I just wanted to say that, speaking solely for myself, in the instances I'm familiar with, I'm a little concerned that staff was being overly flexible in working with, with people. And the reason I say that is, is not because we can strictly enforce every rule and not that every rule should be strictly enforced. There has to be some judgment and whatnot involved. But without mentioning names, the organization that was at the center of a number of these problems, there were multiple complaints that came in about it from multiple restaurateurs who were pretty unhappy about the fact that they were following the rules and they saw other people not following them and apparently getting away with it. So I know that there have been repercussions, but I guess I would just like to ask or add my voice at least saying, if stuff like that starts happening, don't, don't hesitate to, it doesn't have to be business as usual. We're talking about people's health and safety here. And if we need to, you know, get in somebody's face and say, hey, guess what? You know what? Your restaurant's not going to use the space on the street for the next four months. Sorry about what that does to your business. That's fine with me. So, but do keep us apprised on these things, particularly the more serious occurrences like that guy driving down the street.
All right, thanks, Mark. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just two brief questions. Chief, thank you very much for the updates. My question for you is regarding the downtown services unit. Is there a specific day and time that that patrol is happening or do you try and mix it up at different times during the day?
Right now, we're reevalu, right now, we're reevaluating the times because it's starting to get darker earlier. But normally, we're Thursday through Sunday and it's 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And that whole time, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, someone's walking up and down Laurel Street? Or are they kind of popping in and out in between calls?
No, 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 they're not taking calls for service. They're dedicated to Laurel Street.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Because that, that is, that is an additional deputy. That is not a normal deputy that is in service.
Okay, great. I've seen the deputy down there and I always say hello. So I really appreciate having someone down there, so.
Certainly. And I'm, I'm varying the deputies that go down there so the public gets to meet all of them, not just one or two.
Super, thank you. And then my second quick question is maybe for Jeff or maybe Al regarding the Shop Local campaign. I really appreciate that update. I saw that there's plans to run it by EDAC and maybe the Economic Development Subcommittee. And I just, I just want to flag that Black Friday is about six and a half weeks away. And if we're going to do mailers to the community, I know that takes a significant amount of lead time. So I just want to make sure that timing wise, you know, it can, it can be rolled out pretty quickly. And I know Steph has a million other things to be working on. So I, I want to start by saying thank you for, for taking this additional project on. I want to make sure that timing wise, you know, we, we push this, you know, through. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mark, you had another comment?
Yes, just a very, yes, hi. I'm sorry, I was, I mute myself after I stopped talking and I forgot to unmute. So just a very brief comment. I, I assume that everybody else got them, but I've gotten, I believe it was three emails from three separate shopkeepers along Laurel Street since our last meeting. And the emails are very similar. They're all kind of concerned and complaining about the impact on their business of the street closures. And I just want to make sure that, again, that we're all aware of that and sort of ask the question of, are we going to be discussing whether or not we should be doing something different to try and help them or what? Obviously not tonight. It's sort of, is that on a future agenda or what?
Well, we've had, we've had some subcommittee meetings and we had one last week. And we may have another one upcoming. I, I can't speak to my fellow council members, but I have been responding to several of those emails and talking with those merchants. And if anyone else has been so engaged to, you know, please let us know.
Through the chair. I, I, I thought that we had said at the last meeting that we were on a monthly basis going to review the program and that was the intention. So I would expect that in November, we would do that again.
That was my recollection.
Okay, I, I had not recalled that. That's, that'd be fine. I just, you know, it's just an uptick and stuff and, and it just, it concerns me that we may be helping one class of businesses and hurting another class of business inadvertently. So, thank you.
Okay. Laura?
Yeah, I just, in response to Councilmember Olbert, so this issue with retailers has been a concern of mine since the beginning. And every time we talk about the downtown area, it's an area that I do advocate for. And I think what we heard from staff tonight was the Shop Local campaign, which is, you know, very thoughtfully prepared. And as Councilmember McDowell suggested, you know, underscoring the sense of urgency around that. So I think in addition, as I understand Steph, I had a conversation with City Manager Malpe and he shared with me that an updated parking map with the 20-minute parking spots will be distributed shortly to help incentivize people to get out and about downtown. So I, I'm struggling because, you know, there's so much of this is out of our control and the tools that we have to work with are quite limited. So, you know, I'm just hoping in general that things turn around with this pandemic and we can get back to business as usual. But I know that that's a ways away.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, thank you, Laura. I, I think those are all good points and I recall you, you mentioning them when we've discussed this in the past. You know, I guess, I, 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 don't, don't get me wrong. I think the Shop Local program or idea is a nice one to do. What, what is in the back of my mind that I worry about is a lot of the chatter and emails I get and things I read about online and social media, it's not like people don't know that the stores are open downtown, they just don't want to go. And they don't want to go either because they're concerned that it's too much of a health risk because there's too many people walking around without masks, which ends up being an enforcement issue, you know, to the extent it's true. Or that parking is inadequate and they, they can't get near to the stores that they, they would like to go to. So, you know, again, I have nothing against the Shop Local thing. I think it's, it's a good thing to try, but my concern is it might not be enough because it might not really be addressing the reason why people aren't going to the stores. So, but I guess if we're going to discuss it monthly, you know, hopefully we'll figure out something else.
All right. Once again, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Chief Dury. I want to thank, I want you to please pass along your thanks to all of your officers. I think they're just doing an outstanding job. I have not heard any complaints about, from our residents about how they've been treated by our deputies. You know, they're always professional and we are very grateful for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are going to move on now to public hearing, item 8. This is consideration of introducing an ordinance approving the Skyway Center Plan Development, Plan and Related Zoning Map Amendment to rezone the project site from General Commercial Industrial Zoning District to Plan Development Zoning District at 655 Skyway Road, APN 046-081-550. And we are going to hear first from Andrea Marticich.
Good evening. That's correct.
Hello, Andrea.
Hello, how are you?
Fine.
Good. Good evening, Andrea Marticich, Principal Planner. The item before you this evening is for a proposal at 655 Skyway Road with a request for a zoning amendment and approval of a planned development plan. The site is located on Skyway Road to the immediate south of Hiller Aviation Museum. It's the site here in the salmon-colored rectangle. The rear of the property is adjacent to the airport and the site itself is about three and a half acres. Highway 101 is located to the west. And the subject site itself is zone GCI, General Commercial Industrial. It has a corresponding general plan use designation of General Commercial Industrial as well. Looking at the zoning map on the left, you can see that the parcel itself is surrounded by airport zoning, which is that beige color you see. While this parcel, as I mentioned, is owned for the general commercial. There are existing buildings on site, hangers here to the rear on the right picture, and then office buildings located at the front. And this is just a picture of what's existing on site now. Again, this is the office buildings towards the front. As I mentioned, the site is owned GCI, General Commercial Industrial. And this, this district does not allow for airplane hangar uses. Prior to the 2011 zoning code update, this property was zoned to airport along with the, the neighboring properties. However, during that update, this, this parcel itself was changed to GCI, which established the existing hangers as non-conforming. The applicant is requesting the site be rezoned to Plan Development or PD zoning designation to allow for both a hangar use as well as a general office use. As, as part of the PD, the applicant is also asking for some relief from three development standards, landscaping, parking location, and the amount of overall signage. So these are two renderings of the proposed building. The picture above on the left is demonstrating an aerial look at the, the building. You can see the office at the front and there are six hangers located to the rear. The hangers themselves are planned to be named after female aviators. And then the lower rendering is a view just looking straight at the office from the driveway entrance on Skyway. On July 6th of this year, the Planning Commission approved a design review. On July 6th of this year, the Planning Commission approved a design review, transportation demand management plan, and a grading and dirt haul permit. The commission also recommended that the city council adopt the zoning map amendment and plan development plan. The Planning Commission's approval on the designer view permit, the TDM plan and grading and dirt haul, would only become effective if the ordinance is adopted and when it becomes effective. And this project was determined to be exempt from CECL. Sorry about that. The request to rezone the site from GCI to Plan Development would allow, as I mentioned, both hangar uses and office uses. Due to the location of the property, that is, it's surrounded by airport uses, the airport itself as well as the hangers. The combination of both office and hangers is an ideal mix. Because of its proximity to the airport, there are several limitations on what can actually be built there due to the noise and height restrictions put in place because of its proximity to the airport. The proposed combination of both office and hangers allows for some flexibility and also allows the hangers to be located near the airport with the office closer to 101 and Skyway Road. The other development standards the applicant is asking for relief from include landscaping. The applicant is requesting a 6.8% landscaping proposal when 10% is required. A part of that is due, again, to the location in relation to the airport, limitations on the size of trees, trying not to attack, sorry, attract birds. So that's the reasoning for that requirement. The parking location, the applicant is asking for a 10 to 15-foot setback from the property line. Normally, 40 feet is required. This is a deviation that normally isn't allowed with a conditional use permit for any other development that's not a PD. However, it is being included in the overall PD this evening. For signage, the applicant is requesting up to 550 square feet. The code allows up to 100 square feet. The signage itself will be primarily identification signage for the hangers as well as the building itself, the Skyway Center. The owner is not planning on having individual tenants have signage on their building. So it would really be just identification of the center as well as, again, the hangers. As part of its community benefits plan, the applicant is proposing to provide dedicated community meeting space at no cost. This is a floor plan of the first floor, which, and this is all in the office area of the building. This is about 2,100 square feet, and includes a lobby and restroom area. On the second floor, the applicant is proposing a 317-square-foot conference room, open gathering area and restrooms that total about 3,000 square feet. The total space of both floors, including the conference room, gathering areas, and restrooms is about 5,000 square feet. And the applicant is proposing this to be leased by one or more eligible local nonprofits for a term of 10 years. The city's economic advisory consultant, RSG, completed fiscal analysis of the proposed development based on a 25-year period. They estimated the proposed project will generate $1.5 million in revenue in terms of both property taxes and taxes, property taxes for the aircraft over those 25 years. In addition, RSG calculated that this proposal would result in a decrease of about 20% in jobs or 23 less jobs from existing conditions. And then they did conclude that the proposed project would result in a net fiscal benefit for the city. These are renderings provided by the applicant to demonstrate the inside of the area and the area that would be available for use as part of the community benefit. The upper picture shows the first floor lobby, and you can see the balconies from the second floor looking down. And that is where you see on the lower picture, the balcony is looking down into that lobby area here. This is a conference room with these doors. These can open all the way to create one large meeting area. And again, the total would be approximately 5,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing that the nonprofits have availability 20 times per year on a set schedule, and then an additional 20 times per year as available and as works between the landlord and the nonprofit or nonprofits. Steph did reach out to several nonprofits to gauge interest in this type of benefit and did hear back that this would be something that would serve smaller to medium-sized medians at an event and would be a benefit to them, to their services. A public notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet and published in the paper, and staff has not received any comments on the project to date. Staff is available for questions, and the applicant is also available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Crystal, do we have any speakers who would like to comment?
No, no calls at this time.
All right. Do we want to take questions on this part of it? I know that I had three more people lined up. Were they all going to make additional presentations, Andrea? Or are you all, are they all just backup for you?
They're all backup.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine. Okay, so that was a subtotal. All right, let's start with Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Andrea, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it. I just had two questions. One, can you just clarify for the nonprofit piece? So it's essentially a 10-year lease, but it will be held by one nonprofit and then available to others, including that one for meetings? Or what is the structure? I guess I want to understand kind of how that structure works a little confusing to me.
Sure, so the original thought was to have one nonprofit as the kind of head nonprofit who could sublease, you know, quote-unquote, "sublease" for $0 to other nonprofits and manage the calendar and scheduling for that. When we brought this to the city council subcommittee, we were also asked to, you know, have the possibility that other nonprofits have access. So I think originally, our idea was yes, we'll have one nonprofit that manages it. But there is a flexibility to have more than one if that's how it works out in terms of selecting a nonprofit. Staff is also prepared to help create some sort of outreach and selection process to help the landlord pick what nonprofit, you know, they'll end up in a lease with as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, so that we're looking at office space and then hangar space, and the, what is the total square footage that we're looking at now with everything combined?
Sure, let me get those numbers. The total square footage, I believe, is about 70.
70,000?
I think so. Let me just double-check that number. Yeah, 70,000. 70,500.
Can you tell me how, because I think if I'm correct in how we have this, but maybe I misunderstood it. On the commercial linkage fee, how does the hangers, are there differences? Is the, what do we benefit from the hangar versus the office building?
So in this...
Great, different costs for that?
So generally speaking, no, the hangar wouldn't count towards calculation. However, in this case, the entire project does not count. It does not have to pay a commercial linkage fee. And that is because the proposed office at about 20,000 is less than the existing office on site now. And so the commercial linkage fee would only trigger if there's a net new 5,000 square feet.
But even though the whole project is larger, there's no commercial linkage fee for this?
Correct.
And, okay, I think that's concerning to me that we don't, we're not... Why is the hangers are exempt because of, for what reason?
Because they're a storage use, and the commercial linkage fee isn't based off any storage square footage.
Okay, well, again, I'm going to listen to some other comments, but I'm a little concerned that we're not gaining any commercial linkage fee out of this, and we're giving up some, allowing some changes.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andrea. Just a couple of questions. What is the lease going to call for the nonprofit or nonprofits? What will it actually cost the nonprofits? Is there a cash fee or are they going to have to provide insurance? Or, you know, what's the nut that they have to cover?
So my understanding is it's $0. I can ask the, I believe the representative is on, can talk about insurance requirements. But as far as I understand, it's $0. There's other, there's other things the property owner will be providing to them. But in terms of insurance, I'm not too sure of the answer to that. So I can defer to the property owner who would be executing the leases for that.
If they're available, I'm happy to wait.
I believe...
Yes, Andrea, thanks. This is John Winrich with Centrex, and I have Marty Eisenberg, property owner, on the phone. If there's any trouble hearing him relay on my phone, I'll relay personally here. Go ahead, Marty. Questions on the insurance requirements?
Yes, I would expect that nonprofits would have a typical commercial liability policy that would be applicable to all of their operations and activities. If the, and let me add that as a member of board of nonprofits over the years, that has consistently been my experience. If the nonprofit contemplates selling alcoholic beverages at an event, either with a cash bar or by tickets, I would expect that they would have an endorsement that covers what I'll abbreviate as liquor liability. Otherwise, their typical liability policy should cover the usage of the event. And I'm supportive of nonprofits.
Thank you. Andrea, as a follow-up to that, in your discussions and staff's discussions with nonprofits, are you reasonably comfortable, I mean, has that subject come up? That they have that kind of commercial liability insurance, the ones that we're thinking might be used?
We haven't discussed that specifically. However, in discussions with one group in particular, they seemed very eager, and they had a list of questions they wanted answered, and that was not one of them. So they didn't bring that up as a concern, but we also didn't specifically talk about that.
And this next question related to that, this topic, maybe your Greg question. I presume it would be difficult for us to enact something tonight, but leaving that as an issue that needed to be resolved?
Yeah, I think if I understand the question, you know, the liability insurance, I think it would be within the property owner's right to require liability insurance. And the availability of it, I think, and I've been, I think I'll second what Mr. Eisenberg said. I think that most nonprofits who are going to be using space or have an event will have, maybe all, will have some element of liability insurance, and it just needs to satisfy some basic requirements. When you have liability insurance, it's usually like a layer of insurance ahead of your own insurance. So what I've seen is the typical requirement is have a million-dollar liability policy per occurrence, but that the landlord, you know, also has their own insurance that comes after that. So there's plenty of coverage for, to create a comfort level for the property owner and the nonprofit under those typical circumstances.
All right. Thank you. I'll just, that's fine. I'll just note as an aside that, you know, if our goal is to have this space utilized by local nonprofits, we want to make sure that however it works, that it actually gets utilized. If it, for whatever reason, if it turns out that nobody's able to use it, we've sort of, you know, will have accommodated some variances without getting anything in return. So, but it sounds like we'll deal with that if it becomes an issue down the road. One other question, Andrea, that I had, or actually two related ones. So the commitment by the property owner, which I thought was a nice idea, of a number of times per year for nonprofits to use the space. Is there like an hour limit? Or, you know, in other words, being facetious here, 20 times a year of meetings of only 15 minutes is really different than 20 times a year of meetings all day. Okay, so is there some hourly thing on it as well or what?
There's not a specific, you know, timeframe in terms of length, but the owner has indicated they'd prefer it to be in the evening when the other tenants aren't there. So the owner did express some flexibility in terms of if there's an event, he'd prefer them to start after 6:00 p.m. just to get, you know, so the other tenants clear out. But there was no discussion in terms of, you know, the duration of time that it can be used each day that they're using it.
All right, no, that's actually something. I presume, you know, evening starts shortly after normal business hours end and go to, I don't know, 8, 9 o'clock, something like that. That's several hours a night, basically, which is something. Okay, and then last question I had has to do with signage. And it may just be that, you know, we have another item in the agenda tonight, asking for variance on signage on another property. This request for more signage from a, related to what our current ordinances allow, is relatively significant, again, in a relative point of view. And, you know, compared to the Meridian 25 thing, it's very significant sort of relative to the scale of the projects. So I'm trying to understand, you know, why, is there something unique about this that requires so much more signage? Are ordinances out of date or what?
I would say generally speaking, the sign ordinance works pretty well downtown and kind of the smaller businesses. With parcels such as this that are larger, that face 101, you know, a lot of times there is extra signage requested. In this case, I would say specifically it's because of the hangar uses as well as the applicant really trying to create, you know, sort of a branded building rather than advertising each individual tenant. The other, the other sort of piece of it is outside of having a PD, anytime someone requests a sign that faces 101 or is visible from 101, they have to go through Planning Commission approval. So the idea with this is that they requested kind of the maximum they would need or thought they would need so that any future approvals could come through at staff level in accordance with this program.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's not quite helping me understand whether this is, you know, how reasonable a request this is. I guess I'm still struggling with. The, but one last question about signage. Does the, are they allowed, if we were to grant this exception, are they allowed to put up a digital billboard as part of the signage?
I think I can answer that. It's, that's not part of the request to put a digital billboard or an electronic sign.
Okay, these are private signs.
And just to underline the earlier point, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and I do recall that a lot of the additional signage was the naming of each of the hangers with the name of the female aviation pioneer. So there, because of the branding or the theme that they want to have for this project, there's going to be six additional signs, one for each of the six hangers. So that's part of the additional signage, which doesn't face the freeway. It's kind of on the side, and it's visible just for the use of the users of the building.
Okay, so that's important and also to me. And also, thank you for mentioning it. It also implies that since what they're asking for a total of 500 square feet, and it's going to be spread over six or more signs, so each of the signs is not that large.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, and this might be for the applicant. I'm wondering if we can touch a little bit on the status of the current tenants. I know that the San Carlos Flight School is there, and I'm just wondering what the plans are for them. Thank you.
I'll defer to Marty Eisenberg again.
Yes, good evening. There are, there is the San Carlos Flight Center that has been a longtime tenant of 655 Skyway. They have moved their operation to a nearby location in which they are renting from the airport from San Antonio County. A similar operation, West Valley Flying Club, which was also a tenant at Skyway, has also moved its operation to that same location. So both are still at the airport. One of the tenants, one of those tenants has expressed sincere interest in rekindling and becoming an office tenant. It would not, it would very likely not be able to afford these executives' aircraft hangers. It's, they have signed... It's a, they have signed a two-year lease with the county. At the expiration of that two years, it may be possible for them, for uh West Valley and or uh San Carlos Flight Center to return to the Skyway building. There are, there are some questions that have recently arisen about the county requiring that uh, the county which owns or operates the airport. Uh, requiring that any uh, uh, business that operates on the airport uh and for which a concession agreement with the airport is required. Uh, that they have an occupancy or a lease of space from the airport, uh, that is on county land. So that could be an impediment to uh either of those entities returning to 655 Skyway because it's private property, not the uh, uh, airport slash county land. But uh, I, I don't know how better to respond to that question.
That's, that's fine, thank you. That, that's very helpful. I appreciate that answer. Um, and then my second question is if, just for the public's reference, could you just talk a little bit about your outreach to the Greater East Side Neighborhood Association? And how you've um worked to uh make sure that their concerns have been met? Thank you.
Sure. Uh, in 2018, I think it was in March, uh, I reached out to that neighborhood and had a meeting with uh, uh, the principals of that association. They expressed uh concern predominantly about uh, uh helicopter use of uh, of the space because that seems to be the predominant noisemaker over the city of uh, San Carlos. This is not a facility that really can accommodate helicopters because of the way in which the, the buildings are uh, are organized. Helicopter really can't land on this property. And our outreach is not at all to helicopters. Our outreach, which has been uh, uh, very favorable so far, is to uh high-end uh, uh executives', uh, uh fixed-wing aircraft. I should add too, the many helicopters are, are chartered aircrafts under Part 135 of the FAA regulations. We're expressly barred from having occupancy by any aircraft that is registered under Part 135.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments, but I'll, I'll hold those until the question time is over. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. All right, uh, Crystal, I don't see any uh indication from you that there are any speakers of any called in?
Correct, there are no callers.
Okay, all right. Well, before we move on, um, well, let's do this. You're, you're, Sarah, you're going to have a couple of comments. How about a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, there's a motion and a second. Uh, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Uh, well, Sarah, why don't you just continue, have the floor?
Thank you. They're just quick comments. Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate uh the applicant naming hangars after uh female aviators. I think that makes this project really special and I, I just wanted to share my appreciation of that. Um, and then two comments, I understand that there's going to be a significant amount of dirt hauling um done at this project. And I just want to make sure that we emphasize it's really important to be a good neighbor. Um, and, you know, I know that there's dust control measures required um in the documents that we've reviewed tonight, but um, I wanted to call that out. And also I see that Skyway Road is subject to um being repaved or resurfaced per the city engineer's discretion. Um, and I just urge staff to keep a good, good eye on our roadway conditions and make sure that they are um replaced to be, you know, in excellent condition after this project. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Laura?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Collins. Um, I'd like to echo uh Councilmember McDowell's comments. Um, I also do appreciate uh the fact that there will be recognition for uh female aviators. Uh, women's history isn't told nearly enough, so this is a great step in that direction. Um, also appreciate her comments about the dirt hauling because I know that that's can be an issue for our community. And recognize uh Councilmember Rack's concern about the linkage fees. So um, at the appropriate time, perhaps we could explore that a little bit more to see if that we've, we've got a gap. And then uh, with respect to um, you know, this particular pro- project, uh, as I was reviewing it, it seems to be a really good fit uh for that space. And I, I recognize the exceptions uh that need to be made in order to keep uh pilots safe. So in other words, the landscaping variation makes sense to me as, as does the signage, uh, because it seemed like when I read through that, that it was more educational in nature. Um, and then finally, I do appreciate staff reaching out to the other nonprofits to ensure that there's a line of sight into a community benefit that, that may be of interest to a broad uh, part of our community. So thank you uh for your efforts there. Um, and I'm in favor of, of this project as proposed.
All right, thanks, Laura. Uh, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I just want to uh say I appreciate the, the work that's gone into this project and that I'll be supporting it as well.
Okay, uh, great. I don't see any other hands raised. I think uh, unless there's any other, I don't see any indication of any, uh, well, we did close the public hearing, so we can't have another public comment, so uh, I'll entertain.
I, I move to introduce ordinance number?
1564.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the Skyway Center Plan Development Plan and reloading, related zoning map amendment to rezone the project site at 655 Skyway Road. APN 046-081-550 from General Commercial Industrial Zoning District to Plan Development Zoning District.
All right, for a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right, we're going to now move on to item uh 8B. This is consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the Plan Development Zoning District and amending the Associated Plan Development Plan for approval of a sign program in 887 Industrial Road. APN 046-140-190 and 046-140-200 and 046-140-210, previously known as Meridian 25. And I think this is Lisa Costa Sanders?
Thank you, good evening. Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner. As introduced by the mayor, the item before you is a request to amend the Plan Development Permit and Plan Development Zoning District for the approval of a sign program. The subject site is just under eight acres in area and other um located on the corner of Industrial Road and Branston Avenue. Two new six-story commercial buildings are currently under construction. The total building area is just over 55,000 square feet in area. In 2016, the city approved the Plan Development Zoning Designation and a Plan Development Plan. This also included certification of a mitigated negative declaration and other associated entitlements. In 2017, the property was acquired by Meridian, excuse me, was acquired by Alexandria Real Estate Equities with the intention of constructing the development for life science tenants. In 2018, the city approved an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning and Plan Development Plan as well as design review to accommodate the shift from the office use to the life science use. The approved Plan Development Plan did not include a sign program. The applicant requests an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning and Plan Development Plan as well as design review for the approval of a sign program. The Planning Commission considered this item at their September 8th meeting and approved the design review and recommended the City Council approve the amendment to the Plan Development for the sign program. It was a summary of all the signs that are requested to be located on site. A site monument, um, sign at the front entrance at 76 square feet, as well as business building identity signs. Six building-mounted tenant signs at 100 square feet each. One um campus identity sign and a project identity sign at the garage. And I'll walk through each of those for you. So this shows the monument sign that would be proposed adjacent to the driveway entrance at the southern end of the site along Industrial Road. The dimensions of the sign comply with the city's sign ordinance. It is proposed at 6 feet 6 inches tall and our max code height is 8 feet. And then the sign area is proposed at 76 square feet. Pre-standing directional signs are also proposed at several areas internal to the site to provide direction to the buildings. The city's maximum sign area is four square feet with a height of 6 feet. And these signs are proposed to be five square feet each and at a height of 15 feet. The applicant proposes three wall signs mounted on the roof screen of each building for a total of six signs at 100 square feet each. The city's code establishes a maximum sign area of 100 square feet per tenant sign, but does not allow signs above the roof line. Due to the unique design of the building facade with the articulating glass panels, the applicant indicates that there is not feasible space to locate a wall sign. This is the view of the building to the south at 835 Industrial. And at the request of the staff, the applicant has shifted the location of the sign along the south-facing side so as not to appear cluttered from that frontage. So you see here in this building, there would be three um roof-mounted signs, one for each tenant at 100 square feet each. And then very similarly to the building to the north at 825, this would be the view from Highway 101. No building signs are proposed to face Industrial Road. All signs are proposed to face Highway 101 frontage. And this is that side view that would be north-facing and it's very close to the um Industrial Road, um, excuse me, the US Highway 101 frontage. And then finally, the campus identity signage is proposed along the um parking garage structure and that is facing Highway 101. The campus-mounted identity sign is proposed with a total area of 202 square feet. And that includes 136 square feet of text and 66 square feet of logo. The identity sign is included within the total sign area calculations for the site. The city's code does allow project identity signs, but doesn't specify what that total um square footage maximum is. It's left open-ended. Okay, so the proposed sign program requires City Council approval of an amendment to the Plan Development Zoning and Plan Development Permit with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The changes to the Plan Development allow the sign program with a total sign area of 998 square feet and allows signage on the roof screen. Public notice was mailed and published and as of this date, staff has not received any comments on this proposal. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions and the applicant team is also present this evening to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, uh, Crystal, do we have any callers at this point?
No, I'm not seeing any calls at this time.
All right. Mark, you have questions?
Yes. Uh, thank you, and I apologize if my typing was disturbing people. I forgot to mute myself uh as I promised it would. Thank you, Lisa, for a good presentation. I guess one question I have, not about this particular proposal, but given the, the slate of uh large uh projects that are going to be coming through uh the East San Carlos, the East San Carlos area over the next five or six years. Is it, it almost feels like maybe we should, uh, we should task staff with coming, going out and reviewing our sign ordinances for such projects? Because the, um, you know, I don't mind making exceptions, but it's kind of like when you start making exceptions all the time, then maybe what you really need to do is recognize that you've essentially changed your policy. Which is fine, but I'd be interested in your thoughts on that.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. I know the, when the sign ordinance was last updated, and I'm sorry, I don't have that date in front of me. But the, the total sign area per build, per business was reduced. So there was a bit of a downsizing to try to maybe have a more pedestrian feel and scale to the signage. But with these large buildings, I do agree, um, the scale of the sign really needs to fit in with the size of the building and be appropriate. As well as assist with, you know, business identification and advertisement, especially from the freeway side. So that is certainly something we can look at. We do typically see with these larger developments in the plan development process, um, a request for, you know, some sign, additional sign square footage. The sign um program in the code does have the ability for more signs, but it is limited to 100 square feet per tenant. So I think that is something we can certainly take a look at. Yes.
Thank you. Actually, that also reminds me though, I mean, I suppose another way of handling this is just to the extent anything is subject to a plan development agreement, the agreement, the PDA itself can, can call out a separate uh, uh, rule for signage for that project, correct?
That's correct. And that sign program that we were just referencing then establishes what the design is for that building or that campus. So that if they're to make changes over time, it's consistent with the design style that was previously approved. And then staff can make, you know, the new tenant um approvals.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that, that's all I had. I'll, I'll reserve uh the other thing for the end of the, end of the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Lisa, thanks for the presentation. Um, I had just two questions. On the signs, I, I don't have concerns about the, the signs overall and, and I, I, I agree with uh Councilmember Obert that maybe it's something we need to, with some of the development going on, that we should maybe look at their, our sign policy and, and maybe it should be reviewed on sort of a, an area basis. But when was the project, uh, because I wasn't on the council then, so when was the, the, the design approved for the project, the sort of last design?
The current design was approved in 2018, when the City Council approved an amendment to the Plan Development Plan and, and as well the design review.
And that was after Alexandria purchased it from Meridian 25?
That's correct. They made some changes to the building, yes.
Some changes to the building at that point. So, yeah, I was just trying to understand because, I mean, if, if, why we're sort of looking at some of these things, if, if, you know, with the design change, why we're looking at those sort of rooftop signs if people knew or Alexandria knew all along that they were going to have to do that? Why that wasn't sort of dealt with earlier if, because my sense is they, given the design of the building, they knew all along that they would have to use the rooftop for the tenants.
Yeah, and I could have the applicant as available if you would like to refer that question to the applicant at this time.
Sure, I, yeah, it's just more of a timing issue. I don't, I'm going to make a break for you, but sure, if they want to comment on that, that's great.
Who do we have representing the uh applicant?
Taricia, are you able to speak?
Uh, yes, I apologize. I was on double mute. I'm Taricia Demas, um, Executive Vice President uh with Alexandria Real Estate Equities. And the pleasure to be here, um, Mayor Collins and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about our project. You, um, you asked a really good question, uh, Councilmember Rack. I think what, um, we inherited a building design from Wendy Hill. And what we did is actually uh take that building design and alter it, but not modify it to the extent that it would change the composition of the building. The building was always all glass. And so, uh, in a sense, we, we didn't change the um, the concept of the building. At the time, we were trying to get into the ground. Quite honestly, uh, it has taken quite a bit of time to build uh this project. You may know that the parking garage to the rear of the site includes two levels of underground parking and uh two levels or three levels above grade. So it is actually a very time-consuming effort in addition to the amount of uh remediation that we had to do on the site. Uh, and we knew that that remediation was happening. So I think the um, the speed was trying to get us into the ground as quickly as possible. At that point, uh, we actually retained um the services of a signage consultant to do a master plan signage for the whole site. And so that's why this is coming to you piecemeal. Is this the preferred way of doing things? Absolutely not. Is this the way we're going to do things with our next project, which will be coming in front of you hopefully sometime next year? No, we will be coming to you with a very holistic plan. So um, that, that is my explanation this time.
Now, that's very helpful and thank you, Taricia. And then I don't, like I said, I don't really have an issue with signage or what you're requesting at all. I just want to understand sort of the, from the efficiency standpoint, so that's, that's helpful. And I just had one other question and I don't know how, uh, uh, and I saw that the sign it says Alexandria District. And to me, it infers something very formalized, like we have an industrial art zone or we have a downtown district or other things you might call it. And it's sort of where that sort of naming came from and is there concern? and it's sort of where that sort of naming came from and is there concerns from the city aspect perspective that we, like, are we creating a certain district that is now being called Alexandria District with sort of by default because it's been named that?
I can start and maybe Taricia, if you want to expand on how that name was selected. So we don't have really policies on how campuses or, or development properties are named. We really don't have any kind of track record for that, so individual property owners can select what they want to call their properties and when you drive around town, you'll see, we do have a variety of, you know, the GW Williams Business Park, for example. I think Black Mountain has a name on their corner of their property as well, so there's a few different names that have been established and we didn't particularly have concern on, on this name as selected. And Taricia, if you want to expand on how your team chose that name?
Yeah, sure. So we do actually engage the, the services of consultants to help us on thinking how best to present our project to the community and it is the case that the San Carlos area had some life science sort of individual buildings, but didn't have a holistic life science community. So we were aiming to try to create a life science holistic community and so that's the, the effort of trying to create a name that is more comprehensive than just an individual project. Other names that have been used in the past are maybe campus or we have, in New York, we have the Alexandria Center for Life Science at New York. So this was a way of creating something that, again, was bigger than just one or two projects, was looking forward to our future project, which will be coming in front of you and so the entire area would be called the Alexandria District for Life Science. That is not intended to supersede the city's view of itself, of course.
Through the chair.
Hang on, Mark. Adam, were you, were you finished with your question?
Just to off, I'm happy to yield to, to Mark and so, thank you, Taricia, that, that's helpful. I just, I just kind of want to understand sort of the perspective around it. I don't have, you know, big concerns or big issues, it's just helpful to understand the thought process behind that. I just don't want to get in a situation where some of the other biotechs that are coming in over there feel like they're being slighted because they're sort of, you know, we've got other ones that are coming, other projects, there's at least two, three other ones and more coming to feel like this all of a sudden becomes the Alexandria District when there are non-Alexandria biotechs in that area.
Okay, Mark?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should have explained, I, I'm not trying to stop Adam, I'm, I'm actually just wanted to participate in the conversation that he triggered and Adam, thank you very much for mentioning it because I had forgotten about this. And, and Taricia, I'm going to say it this way, just to be clear and, and I, I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything inappropriate, but I have to say personally, I am absolutely one-hundred-and-ten percent opposed to the idea of any developer coming in and labeling multiple property, multiple parcel areas of San Carlos as their district, okay? Campuses, absolutely, I understand that, that's a private property right in a sense, okay? But once you start including other areas and streets and all sorts of other stuff, nope, not willing to do that. Now, I will be on the council when that's an issue, but I would strongly urge my colleagues to oppose that. There are plenty of other ways that these things could be named with some kind of continuity and connection through the various Alexandria connections because they do own multiple properties that are near each other, but I don't think anybody but the community of San Carlos should be deciding what parts of San Carlos are called, ever.
All right, thank you, Mark. Crystal, do we have any callers?
No, I'm not seeing any calls come in.
All right, Sarah, you had a comment?
I do, thank you. Yeah, I just, I just kind of wanted to build on what Adam and Mark just said. I, and I, I want to say also, I watched the Planning Commission meeting on this and there was some concern by our planning commissioners about calling this a district right off the bat as well. So I do think that this is a concern that's held by several. I don't know, I, maybe Greg can weigh in. I, I, it's, I seem to recall a discussion that we can't really opine on the actual words on the sign, is that true? Or maybe Lisa?
I'll defer to Greg for sure.
Yeah, I, yeah. Well, having been involved in the, in the drafting of the current sign ordinance with the, with a specialized outside council, I do know this was drilled into me as part of that whole process is that we, we are restricted in anything dealing with the content of the signage, but the look and feel of a sign and the size of the sign and the placement of the sign, those are things that we can do as a city, but the content of the sign is something that we have to be very careful about looking at. I do understand the point that there might be some confusion that, that this area of town's been named, but it's really just the developer who's calling their development by this name. The same goes for logos and, and, you know, corporate logos. Very, very difficult to try and regulate corporate logos, you know, major chains and different hotel chains and everyone else who has their, their signage and identifies their, their business, even colors and things of that nature can, can start to get into First Amendment issues about commercial speech. So it's be careful. You know, I, I, at this point in the development, I think that my, my opinion is tonight is that, you know, a name of a, of a project does not establish that this, it's a city message that this area has become some sort of a district because the city could always declare that this district is some other name for our district and, and it's just their buildings that they're trying to identify. So that's kind of my take on, on one of those. Very, very hard to regulate speech that people want to put on signs.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I, I just, I think that's confusing to the community to have a private developer naming a district versus the city saying, actually, we call it something else, so I'll voice that concern. And also, Lisa, there is some general cleanup work that we could do with the sign ordinance. I think it was raised at the Planning Commission that signage should be turned off at 1:00 AM, but that's not currently part of the sign ordinance. If there, I, I would, I would second Adam's and I think Mark alluded to it too, if there's some, some cleanup work that we need to do to the sign ordinance, I, I too support that. Thank you.
Okay, Laura?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Collins. I, I just want to echo the suggestion that we take a look at our signage ordinance in light of the impending development. I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah or, I'm sorry, Crystal, did anyone else call in?
No, there are no calls.
All right, do we have a motion to close a public hearing on this item?
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins.
Yes, okay. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number?
Fifteen sixty-five.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending the Plan Development Zoning District and amending the associated Plan Development Plan for the approval of a sign program at eight-eight-seven Industrial Road, accessory parcel number zero-four-six-one-four-zero-one-nine-oh, zero-four-six-one-four-zero-two-zero-zero and zero-four-six-one-four-zero-two-ten, previously known as Meridian twenty-five.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, Crystal, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item eight-C, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Title eighteen zoning consisting of replacement of Section eighteen-point-two-three-point-two-one-zero, second dwelling units and amending sections eighteen-point-zero-four, residential districts eighteen-oh-five, mixed-use districts eighteen-dash-point-fifteen, general site regulations eighteen-point-sixteen, affordable housing programs eighteen-point-nineteen, non-conforming uses, structures and lots eighteen-point-twenty, parking and loading eighteen-point-two-four-point-two-three-oh, wireless telecommunication facilities, definitions and acronisms, or, I'm sorry, not anachronisms, definitions and acronyms and eighteen-point-four-zero, use classifications for consistency with state law. Okay, all right, we have, let's see, who is Al? Are you going to start us off on this item?
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, we have Lisa Porras this evening, our Planning Manager.
Hello, Lisa.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Collins, Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan and council members. Lisa Porras, Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. I will be giving this presentation tonight. However, I am joined by my colleagues and peers Andrea Martisich, Principal Planner, and Sadhuti Ramanhak, our Management Analyst, who have also spent many hours, hours deciphering state laws and organizing multiple meetings so we can better understand the state laws that have been passed recently and have made contributions to what's before you this evening. So again, thank you for reading all of that into the record. The item before you is consideration of amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So let's see, how do I advance the slide here? Give it, I'm not sure. Can I get the next slide, please?
Okay, I'll go ahead and move it for you, but you should be able to, to use your mouse to progress also.
Okay, oh, I think I see it now, thank you. Okay, so while there are several reasons for bringing forth these amendments to you this evening, including, for instance, making it easier, easier to build additional housing units in San Carlos, but the foremost reason is to really bring the second dwelling unit ordinance into compliance with state law. And over the years, and more recently last year in two thousand and nineteen, a series of laws have been passed and signed by the governor to loosen government constraints and in essence to turn it, to open up the regulations that make it easier to construct ADUs. And what's also very encouraging is that the state allows both accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to count towards a city's arena. And there we go.
Just a moment.
Sorry about that. Oh my, that's on. Sorry about that, myself, Siri thinks I'm talking to her and I'm not, so I'll just get rid of the.
I thought it was my phone.
Sorry. Okay, so, so before we dive into the state law requirements and what's actually in the ordinance before you this evening, I just wanted to provide just a short pause to share a summary of the steps that we took to arrive with a proposed ordinance that's before you this evening. So first of all, where we started is we reviewed a lot of the state, all of the state laws and really did our best to understand them. The way that we did this is we spent a lot of time collaborating with our peers through the twenty-one elements process, who also provided legal counsel to help present and clarify the laws that the state had just recently passed. So we went through that process and then we decided that it was ready to hold a study session with the Planning Commission so that we can get some community input on this process. So we kicked this off by sending postcards to every single address in the city and on those postcards, we identified a website for this project where people could continue to learn and see this project advance towards the public hearing stage where it currently is in now. We had that study session with the Planning Commission where we had a number of people attend and we did receive some good comments. This was in-person as it was October of last year and we got comments back from the Planning Commission. Now, just around that same time, there were another, there was another wave of laws that were passed. So actually, where we're at today, we're really including some previous laws, the most recent laws, and then most recently, clarification from the state through their publication of a technical guidance memo that was just released in last September. So the ordinance before you encompasses all those components. So we reviewed those state laws as it mentions here on the slide. We also went to the Transportation and Circulation Commission at the direction of the Planning Commission mainly because there was a lot of relaxations coming forth as mandates by the state for ADU parking and the Planning Commission felt it was best to present those to the TNC for comments that they may have to contribute towards the process. Finally, we were able to make it to Planning Commission in June of this year and then right around, and we received the recommendation that's before you this evening. However, just following that, we did receive public comments from a gentleman representing an organization stating that our ordinance was not in fact compliant with state law. So out of an abundance of caution, we paused the process, we did not proceed with our council hearing date that was scheduled for July and instead, we had our ordinance reviewed by outside legal counsel. In addition, as I mentioned before, HCD just so happened to finally release their technical guidance memo in September, just last month. So with comments received from outside counsel and with further clarification from the state regarding the state laws that have recently passed, we now have an ordinance that's before you that has been clarified and we believe in compliance with state law. Now, I will mention that HCD, following the adoption of this ordinance, does require cities to, to submit their ADU ordinance for review. If the state finds anything that's not consistent with state law, they will let us know, they will send it back to us and we will make the changes and bring it back to council. However, this was thoroughly reviewed and we don't think that's the case, but of course, I can't say one-hundred percent because only HCD can let us know that. So as was outlined in the reading of this ordinance, the recommendation before you is a recommendation of the Planning Commission to fully replace Section eighteen-twenty-three-ten, which is currently identified as the city's second dwelling unit and to fully replace it with a new ordinance that would govern both accessory dwelling units, ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units. All of the other amendments to other sections of the code are primarily to address the verbiage. All throughout our code, you'll see these units identified as second dwelling units, but one of the small changes that the state made is they changed the name to accessory. So that's why, for example, you're going to see an amendment to the wireless ordinance where it does mention a second dwelling unit or a second dwelling unit, so that's just an example of, of why there are so many sections that need to be addressed. So let's go ahead and, and dive into this. The first thing I wanted to share with the council and just to clarify is that there are generally five ways to create an accessory dwelling unit. Now, I want to just pause for a moment and say five ways for, for ADUs within single-family zoning districts and in San Carlos, that's the RS-three and RS, RS-six zoning districts. So generally, five ways to create an ADU in these areas is number one, it can be detached from a single-family dwelling unit or it can be attached to the single-family dwelling unit. You can also create an ADU out of existing space within a single-family home. Say you have a bonus room or a rec room or a very large living room or some just extra space that a property owner may feel they no longer need or want or utilized, they can take that, they can modify the floor area and, and construct an ADU within the existing footprint of the home. You can also do that for a junior accessory dwelling unit. And I want to pause for just a minute, is that the only way a JDU can be created is if it's within the existing single-family home. So ADUs can do that as well, but they can also be detached or attached. An ADU can also be created through a conversion of an existing garage or carport and an ADU can be constructed over a garage. Now, I will mention that with respect to ADUs over garages, the state does not mandate that cities have to allow ADUs over garages. Cities can choose to. So in the case of San Carlos, historically, we have allowed ADUs above garages. So in the spirit of keeping things as much the same as we could, we carried we carried that forward into the new ordinance. However, the council could choose not to allow an ADU above garage, above a garage. However, this was a recommendation from the planning commission, and it was originally recommended by staff and recommended by the planning commission. But I can share that some other cities do not allow garages, excuse me, ADUs above a garage. Now, just to also clarify, it's important to understand where ADUs can be allowed. So with a new set of state laws that were recently passed, the state law says that municipalities have to allow an ADU wherever residential is allowed. So this is not only a single-family residential, but it's also multifamily residential, and which would also include mixed-use districts, because our mixed-use districts do in fact allow for a residential component above the ground floor commercial. So while the ADU in these multifamily structures or in those particular contexts, this is brand new. We don't know how common they're going to be, but they are, of course, you know, not as easy to do in the single-family zoning district. But I wanted to pause for a moment just to let the council understand that anywhere residential is allowed, you have to allow an ADU. And that would include also HOAs, and also a planned development that includes residential. And the way that it works for multifamily structures is that up to 25%, doesn't mean they get 25%, but up to 25% of the number of existing units in a multifamily or mixed-use building that has residential, the spaces within that structure that are currently not used as living space can be converted to ADUs. So the number of ADUs that you get in that, in the areas that are not used as living space is up to 25% of the units that are already there. Or on the same law as a multifamily structure or mixed-use structure, you could get up to two detached ADUs. So this is what the state law, so I just, state law mandate, so I just wanted to clarify that for the council. In San Carlos, there are nine zones that are residential zones. Those are the two RS zoning districts, single-family zoning districts, and then also the multifamily and mixed-use, the RM20, RM59, and all of the mixed-use zoning districts as well. So the next couple of slides just give some examples. I'm sure the council is familiar with this. These are just a couple of examples of detached units, presumably located in their rear yard of a single-family lot. And then the next slide, and it is an example of junior accessory dwelling units. Junior accessory dwelling units do need to have a private entryway from the outside, and they do need to have an efficiency kitchen. However, they do not need a private bathroom such as an ADU would have. Junior accessory dwelling units can share a restroom with the primary dwelling. So what we thought we would include in the presentation tonight is just a series of FAQs to sort of get us used to and familiar with what the state allows. And then I want to move into actually a summary of the new laws, and then our proposed ordinance. So that's what the remainder of this presentation will include, and then we can get to any questions the council has. So first of all, there was, it was a bit unclear in the past whether an ADU and a JDU can be built on one lot with an existing single-family home. And the state clarified that to say that you can have one ADU and one ADU. So essentially, that amounts to three units on the lot. With respect to parking, ADUs are required to have one space, but there's a couple of examples where the parking space would not need to be required. And that is if it's in a half mile of a public transit stop, and that can be rail or a bus, or whether it's in a historic district, whether it's next to car share, there's a couple of examples that we can share. But if it doesn't meet any of that criteria, then one ADU space is required. For JDUs, no parking spaces are required. With respect to the height of a detached ADU, the state says cities have to allow at least 16 feet in height. The state further says that the cities cannot impose a number of stories. So originally, we had drafted a proposal that said only one story, but we actually had to remove the one-story reference, because again, the state does not allow us to impose a limit on the stories. Instead, they just really direct, direct cities to follow the maximum height, which which would be 16 feet. I'll come back to this, but just briefly, I'll mention that the proposed ordinance sets a height limit for ADUs above garages to 20 feet. The state does not mandate ADUs above garages, nor do they mandate a certain height limit above garages. So those are two areas that the city has authority in determining if they want to allow. And the recommendation before you is 20 feet. However, there have been some questions as to the character of the ADU above the garage and its roof pitch, and, you know, would it be considered, you know, could it end up being too flat if it was limited at 20 feet? So that's something we can certainly talk about, and the planning commission did discuss it, but ultimately, it was left at 20 feet. The next component has to do with the overall size of an ADU. Now, in the state law, the state set a maximum size of an ADU at 1,200 square feet, and then a maximum size of a JDU at 500 square feet. Now, the state says that cities can allow an ADU larger than 1,200 square feet, and similarly, they can allow an ADU that is smaller. However, if a city does decide to want to make the ADU smaller, then there are some limits to that. The state says the city must allow at least up to 850 for one bedroom. So if we wanted to make it smaller, we couldn't make it any smaller than 850. And for a two-bedroom or more, we have to allow at least up to 1,000. So this is what's included in the recommendation before you, and I can explain our thinking behind that as we go further into the presentation. One thing that the state did mandate, also mandated, is that regardless of any lot coverage constraint or FAR constraint, which is, which in our case is, you might all recall, the maximum floor area. And the maximum floor area standard came out of the single-family house size. So we do have an FAR sort of base standard in our RS6 single-family zoning district. So if an ADU was proposed on a lot, or say the house was already maxed out, or it was already occupying 50% of our lot coverage, because again, 50% is our maximum lot coverage, then the state says, well, those two factors cannot be a constraint towards building an ADU, and cities would have to allow it. And further went on to say that they have to allow up to 800 square feet. It doesn't mean you can shove 800 square feet on a lot, but it means that if it can fit, you can put an 800 square foot ADU on the lot, even though it may exceed lot coverage or FAR. And such an ADU, this limiting, this this limit of an 800 square feet or up to 800 square feet, square foot ADU, is referred by the state as a statewide exemption ADU. Next, I wanted to talk about FAR. Now, you just, I just talked about how an ADU can exceed the FAR. And again, San Carlos does have a maximum floor area for single-family homes in the RS6 zoning district. And you can go beyond that. So I think I just answered the same question. Some of these are a little bit the same. The one thing I will share with this FAQ number five is that when the planning commission understood how this worked, they went on to recommend that, why not just accept 800 square feet from MFA if indeed that square footage is used for an ADU? They felt it would be unfair if a property owner who already had a maxed-out home could just add 800 square feet to their lot. However, in the reverse, if a property owner hadn't maxed out their home but then built an ADU, then they could be limited in doing an addition on their single-family home. And in the staff report, there's a chart that kind of walks through that scenario. And if the council has any questions, we can certainly pause and dive deeper into that component of what's before you this evening. But otherwise, this is one area where the planning commission said it shouldn't matter where you start from. Why not just give a blanket 800 square foot exemption, but only towards the utilization of an ADU? There were some comments that we received about what it means to, what an efficiency kitchen means. And this is mentioned in the, in the use classification for a JDU. And this is actually found on packet page 237. But essentially, an efficiency kitchen, although not defined by the state, was discussed quite a bit by the planning commission. And they felt that rather than having a proposal come in, which really has the bare minimum, they wanted to at least see a built-in cooking facility, so so not just like a blank wall where someone kind of had to craft an efficiency kitchen themselves, but they wanted to see something that was built in, that had space for appliances such as a microwave, a hot plate, or a toaster oven. They wanted to see a food preparation counter and some cabinets for basic storage. So that is what is included and is recommended before you this evening by the planning commission. Also, with respect to reach codes, I will, I'm not going to, you know, claim to be an expert on these, but in my discussion with Chris Valley earlier today is that with reach codes, if an, if a parking space is required for an ADU, then that parking space need not be equipped with electrical vehicle charging component, whereas the primary house, I imagine, would. The next question has to do with garage conversions. And really, the question had to do with, well, can any garage be converted to an ADU no matter where that garage happens to sit on the lot? You know, maybe it's at, it's at the zero lot line, or it's three feet away, nonconforming. Where, whatever it is, no matter what the state says, if the garage is already there, we have to allow it to be converted to an ADU should a property owner want to do that. So it doesn't really matter where that garage is placed on the lot. The next question is, can you do an addition to, say, a garage conversion? So with, for example, an existing garage, no matter what the size, and recognizing that most garages are 20 by 20, are additions allowed? So the answer to that is the state allows cities to, or requires cities to allow at least 150 square foot feet to be added on to that garage to allow for ingress and egress. Cities can choose to allow for more, but at minimum, it's 150 square feet. And that is what, before the council this evening. Again, the council could choose to add more if they would like to. And then finally, what is the maximum height for an ADU over a garage, and how does it work? So as I mentioned before, the state doesn't mandate a height limit for ADUs above garages, and further overall does not mandate them, that we allow them. Basically, the city can set the height limit for an ADU above garage. And what staff has had recommended and brought forward to the planning commission, which is included in the recommendation before you this evening, is a maximum of a, of 20 feet. Now, we did hear some concerns, and this was discussed at the planning commission, but ultimately, we did not receive direction to change it. But there was some concern about the roof pitch or the type of roof that would be allowed with a 20-foot limitation. I will share that other cities have struggled with this. Our neighboring city, Redwood City, I can't remember where they, they had the height limit before, but it was high enough to cause some concerns amongst the neighbors. And so they started to look at that and reevaluate it, and were, and was considering 20-foot maximum height limit with a total plate height of eight feet, and then the maximum height at 20 feet. However, and this is something that I think their council recently just passed, is that they decided to forego ADUs above garages. Another city that decided to forego ADUs above garages was Burlingame. However, like I mentioned previously, San Carlos has historically allowed these over garages, ADUs over garages, so we wanted to keep that. And in addition, one of the recommendations or statements by the planning commission is we should be as flexible as possible in allowing these units to get built in our city. So that is included in the recommendation before you. However, should the council want to provide a little bit of relief in the overall height, they could choose to do so. And staff would not object to something that's, say, a two-foot increase that allows for some degree of roof pitch rather than just a flat roof. So as these state laws have passed, you know, a lot of people have been coming forward to, to us, to planners at City Hall, and the commonly asked questions are, well, which development standards apply? And then again, how much will it cost? So one of the things that we are going to be doing in really helping residents understand what they can build on their lot is to really develop a robust website. As I mentioned before, San Carlos does have an existing ADU project website, and so this website will continue to live on within the city's overall website. And we will continue to expand upon it and put forth as many helpful guides, brochures, FAQs, and links to other resources to help people understand the resources that are available to them. And also, staff currently provides, you know, one-on-one good customer service with any homeowner who wants to build an ADU. This is one area where our internal policy is, is anytime anyone has a question, we really make ourselves available through Zoom calls, through phone calls and emails to really help a homeowner wade through the regulations. So we're going to expand on our website that we already have. The other thing that we want to put links on the website to direct folks to is San Mateo County Second Unit Center. They have a series of workbooks and templates that property owners can look at and get inspiration from. And there's also a calculator on the website that can provide estimates as far as what an ADU would cost. And then lastly, sorry for the format glitch. There, we can direct people to San Mateo County Credit Union, and they offer, they do offer loans for ADUs. And both, and this website is actually located right here on the screen for folks that are watching. I did want to share just briefly an example of that second dwelling unit calculator. This screenshot here shows a series of options that someone using this calculator can select from. You can decide if you are going to do a conversion or a garage, a conversion of the part of a home, or a garage conversion. Maybe you want to bring in a modular building, or you want to do outright new construction. You can also select if you're looking at a studio, a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. And then essentially, what it does after you select these options, it gives you construction cost estimate. So it gives you the hard cost, soft cost, and then a certain amount for local government fees. This is incomplete at the time, but at this time, but this is, is an example of a calculator that the San Mateo County is currently putting together to help all cities within its jurisdiction provide the same consistent information to homeowners. So now, I wanted to summarize the most recent set of laws that were passed just in 2019, late last year in 2019, and then tho- those laws that came into effect as of January of this year. So one of the things that the state said is that previously, they said, well, cities can choose to allow a JDU or not. Now, in, as of 2020, we have to allow them. If a homeowner wants to build a JDU, they can do that, and they can even do that in addition to an ADU that they might want to build on their property. As I mentioned before, ADUs are allowed in locations where all residential is permitted. So again, this includes multifamily and mixed-use zoning districts, the nine districts that we currently. the nine districts that we currently have in our city. The state law clarified that lot coverage and any floor area limits could, could not be a barrier towards the construction of an ADU. So in cases where those were exceeded, again, the state law sets forth what they refer to as a statewide exemption ADU, which is up to eight hundred square feet. So they didn't want to go as far as up to eight fifty or up to one thousand. So they, they limited it in some respects by saying that if you're going to exceed a standard, well, then you get to up to eight hundred. And that's again up to because it all depends on what you can actually fit on your lot. There are also owner occupancy relaxations. A lot of cities previously had, including our city, a requirement where either the ADU or the main house needed to be owner occupied. The state relaxed those requirements, so we can no longer require them. And this is mandated until a certain point in time. And after that, you know, the right, that regulation can go, that state mandate will expire, and it's up to the city if they want to choose to extend it. In addition, the state made it easier to construct ADUs by saying that you don't have to provide replacement parking for your main house should you choose to convert your garage to an ADU. So you can convert your garage, your two-car parking garage to an ADU and not need to provide replacement parking somewhere else on the lot. Again, that's just for garage conversions and ADUs only. If a JDU or a portion of a JDU wanted to occupy some portion of a garage, then any parking that would be removed would need to be replaced. The state went further on to say, to relax, excuse me, to relax side yard and rear yard setbacks. Previously, setbacks for ADUs were allowed to be five feet away from the side yard and rear yard. And with the new laws that came into effect, they're now reduced to four feet. Short-term rentals are also prohibited. So if a property owner wanted to rent out their ADU, they would have to do it for at least thirty days at a time, thirty days or longer. They can't do anything less than thirty days. That's state law. And then finally, the state previously had a maximum ADU size at twelve hundred square feet. And now, they've allowed cities to modify that and reduce the size of an ADU. But if the cities choose to reduce the size, again, they have to allow up to at least eight fifty square feet for a one-bedroom, studio or a one-bedroom, and up to at least a thousand square feet for a two-bedroom or more. And then just remembering, a statewide exemption ADU is limited to eight hundred square feet. And again, that only applies in situations where that ADU may be exceeding lot coverage or an MFA standard. And then finally, for a JDU, the maximum size of a JDU is five hundred square feet. You can't make it any larger than that. So what areas can the city tailor and still be in compliance with state law? The first one is ADU size. So again, although the state sets the limit at twelve hundred, with, of course, the allowances to be smaller than that, cities could choose to make ADU size limits larger. They can go beyond twelve hundred square feet if the city chooses to. The cities can also, you have the authority to not require parking for any circumstance whatsoever. You can just say for ADUs, we don't want to require parking. Also, for, with regards to additions or expansion of a, of a conversion, say that garage conversion or a shed conversion, you can allow for more than one hundred and fifty square feet for ingress and egress if the council chooses to. And then with respect to design standards, the city can choose to present for some design standards, but those have to be sufficiently objective to allow for ministerial review of ADUs. So what ministerial review is, is that there's no hearing. There's no design review hearing. The, the ADU can, is not, you know, per state law, may not be, shall not be reviewed in a public hearing. This means that property owners working with their designers and/or architects can present plans to the building division and get a permit for an ADU without any hearing. That's what administrative review means. However, that doesn't mean planning does not get involved. We get a copy of those plans, and we make sure that it follows all of the rules and regulations that would be set forth in this ordinance. And then lastly, what's not on here, which there are many things, and this one was inadvertently omitted, though it was discussed, is that cities can choose not to allow ADUs above garages. So this is another area where the city can choose not to, yet still be compliant with state law. But again, as San Carlos has historically allowed them, we continue, we propose to continue to allow them, and that is part of the planning commission's recommendation. So the proposed development standards that are presented, that were presented to the commission and are presented to the council tonight, they don't go beyond state requirements. And this basically means that staff did not take the authority to do more than what the minimum the state mandates. So what you see before you is minimum compliance. And a little bit of some background on that is just recognition of all of the effort that went into the single-family house size study, recognizing that folks were concerned with the amount of development taking place on a lot with privacy issues, shadows and light and so forth. So within that spirit, we did not opt to go any further than, than what we could otherwise do. So for staff's, for staff's perspective, there was no reason to allow an ADU larger than the minimum size the state allowed in the spirit of that single-family house size. So that is what is contained in the ordinance before you. So just getting, providing a summary of what the ordinance contains. For setbacks, we did set them at four feet on the side and rear yard. And this would apply for ADUs that are attached and detached and above a garage. Those apply equally to all of those different ADU types. The minimum size of an ADU for one bedroom, excuse me, maximum size of an ADU is eight hundred and fifty square feet. For a two-bedroom, one thousand square feet. And again, eight hundred square feet when lot coverage and MFA is exceeded. And just to clarify, anytime you're converting an accessory structure, whether it's a garage, a barn, or something else, there really isn't a size limit. So say, for example, someone had a ten-car garage, just in theory, that happened to be, you know, one thousand, one hundred square feet, then state law mandates that we allow the total existing square foot, square footage of that accessory structure to be converted to an ADU. And if you wanted to expand upon that existing, pre-existing accessory structure, you're allowed to do up to one hundred and fifty square feet for ingress and egress. And again, the, the state says you can allow for more, but this is the, the, the minimum that we have to allow. So that's what's included in the ordinance. The maximum size of a JDU is five hundred square feet. The maximum height for an ADU is sixteen feet if it's detached and twenty feet if it's over a garage. I already mentioned this, but I know there's a lot in this ordinance, so I'll just keep repeating it. Parking, parking for an ADU is required. However, you don't have to require it when you convert a garage or an accessory structure for that ADU. And even when you convert that garage or carport to an ADU, you do not have to replace the parking for the single-family home. However, if you build a JDU, then you do have to replace the parking. Parking is also not required if it's, the ADU is within half a mile of public transit. And again, that means a rail stop or a bus stop. And parking is also not required if an ADU is, is created out of space from an existing single-family home. This concludes my presentation this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and thanks for your patience and allowing me to get through all of this detail. I recognize that it is a lot, and so, but we're here to answer and clarify any questions you have. Thank you.
Wow, Lisa, that was an incredibly thorough presentation. Thank you very much. There's a lot there. Before we get to questions, Crystal, are there any public speakers?
No, there are no callers.
All right. So it is nine sixteen. Does anybody have any objection to taking a five-minute break?
Not here. That's fine.
Okay, all right. Why don't we, why don't we say nine twenty-five? We'll just round it off. We'll come back at nine twenty-five. That gives us eight minutes. Okay? We'll see you then. Just want to make sure there's, if there are no other speakers, and I have not, Crystal has not notified me.
Correct. There are no speakers.
There are no speakers. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
Close the public hearing. I move to close, close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Crystal?
Councilmember Rack? Oh, you're on mute. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. All right. Let's get to some questions. First up is Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, for a, a very comprehensive presentation. Although I have to admit, I thought I understood this better before the presentation. So I apologize if I'm going to ask some weird questions out of confusion. One of the things that I'm trying to, or trying to assess with the proposal is any instances of where we are going beyond what the state is requiring as a minimum. Not necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying I'm opposed to doing that. I just want to understand where we are. And I thought I heard you say at the very end of the presentation that the current ordinance does not go beyond the state minimums basically anywhere, which would answer my question. But then it also has language in, in there about height limits over garages. And I thought I heard you say earlier that the state preemption actually allows local communities to simply say, no, no ADUs over a garage. So I'm, I'm trying to juggle those things and get a better handle on, on what exactly are, what exactly, how exactly does what the ordinance contain compare to what the minimum state requirements are?
That's a very good point, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify because I would say the one and only exception is really the allowance of ADUs above garages. And the only reason that they are in the ordinance before the council this evening is because we have historically allowed them. And we also received direction from the planning commission that we continue to allow them, and they further just made the point that we should be as welcoming as we can towards the production of ADUs. So beyond that, we are not exceeding any state requirements or in terms of going above and beyond what the minimums that the state allows. With, the only exception would be the ADU provision above garage. And again, that's only there because we've historically have allowed it.
Okay, good. That, that, thank you for clarifying that, what I thought was sort of inconsistency there. One other one I want to test to make sure I understand, the eight hundred square foot minimum thing. If, if we did not adopt that specific language, it sounded to me like for some situations, the state would require different, I don't know, smaller, bigger, something, but different from what we've got. Again, I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to, to being different from the state. I'm just trying to understand where the differences are. So can you remind me again what difference, if any, is baked into that eight hundred square foot thing?
Well, there is no difference because essentially what the state is saying is that, you know, most cities, we agree, will have lot coverage requirements. So if an ADU was to exceed, say someone wanted to build a ADU, but they were finding that lot coverage was presenting a constraint, meaning they're hitting the fifty percent or they would be going well above it, the state law was written such that that would not be a constraint. And likewise, if a city had a FAR standard, or which, of course, we have the maximum floor area standard, that that too shall not be an impediment towards the construction of an ADU of up to eight hundred square feet. And I hope I understood your, your question. But I, I think if we didn't have the MFA, the, the one constraint that we would have would be the, obviously, the lot coverage.
Would it be, let me see if I can test my understanding. Would it be fair to say that maybe what we're talking about here is, in a, not in a sense, but, but when you look at the combined ADU plus primary residence, we are allowing, if an ADU gets built, higher lot coverage than, than we would without an ADU?
That would be correct.
Okay, all right. So, so again, we're being consistent with the state. We're sort of tweaking what we've done in the past as far as primary residents. Okay, fine, good. Thank you. Switching gears a bit, the other thing I wanted to understand is the garage situation. I spent some time talking to Jeff this afternoon, and it just so happens that, that my master bedroom suite in my house is built on top of my garage. And if the height limit was twenty feet, I think I'd have to crouch to get into my bedroom. A little bit. That's a bit of an exaggeration, probably. But, so my question is, can you in practice actually build a decent living space with a, with an eight-foot height, or, you know, pardon me, with a twenty-foot height limit of a garage with a living space on top of it? I'm having a hard time visualizing that. It almost seems like it, it wouldn't work.
Well, you know, there are probably some instances where it would, could, could present a challenge or some sort of modification to, you know, maybe the height of the garage, obviously changing. You'd have to, you know, if there's an existing one-car garage that's attached to the house, obviously, it's roofed, and you'd probably need to modify the, the plate height for that garage to be able to fit a twenty-foot, an ADU with a twenty-foot height limit. Now, I know that our neighboring city, in conversations with their planners, basically did a lot of research and found that it was possible to do so, but it could limit the appearance of that roof. And this is one of the things that we discussed with the planning commission in, in, in that, you know, limitation. However, again, again-
Limiting appearance, meaning like you might have to do a flat roof instead of a peak roof, something like that?
Correct, correct, right, right, exactly. And, and, and again, in the spirit of being mindful of the height and massing for which we would allow in, in situations where we would choose to allow an ADU over a garage, we limited at that. And my understanding through the research that we did was that twenty-foot seemed to be common. It wasn't, you know, the average or anything like that, but it was very common. And, and again, you know, some cities decided to just forego it and not even allow an ADU. And again, it was discussed at the planning commission, but ultimately, that did not come forward in a recommendation to increase it. And staff would not object if the council wants to make a minor modification to give a little bit more room to accommodate for some variation in roof pitch.
Okay. I, I guess, for what it's worth, I'm, I'm not personally opposed to proposing something like that, but I don't know enough about design to know, like, does one foot mean something? Does two-foot extra mean something? So if staff has any guidance on that, I'd love to hear it. Because, you know, I, I, I'm not an architect. So do you have any comments about that?
Well, you could, you could do it. I mean, it's going to present some limitations and maybe some that are not ideal. But we found that eight feet is, is an adequate height, a plate height for a second-story ADU. However, if we wanted to allow some flexibility in that, again, staff would not object. We were just being very conservative with the overall height in the spirit of, you know, massing and light and shade and those sort of issues that tend to come up whenever you're doing a second-story addition.
Okay, well, I, I tell you what, I'll have to think about this a little bit more. An eight-foot plate height, if I'm understanding the term plate height correctly for an ADU on top of a garage, that, I mean, yeah, I'm six foot tall, I would fit in that, but it would feel- yeah, I'm six foot tall, I would fit in that, but it would feel pretty claustrophobic. So that may help answer my other question. Let me mull, mull that over here, what other people have to say. One last question then. Are you, did you get a chance to see the email that Matt Grocott sent in about balconies?
I did not see that. If it came in today, I did not see it.
See if I can summarize it. He, he, his reading is that the proposed ordinance would disallow balconies under circumstances, I guess with an ADU over a garage or something like that. And he was suggesting that we not do that. In other words, not disallow them in all circumstances because they may actually provide value and, and help deal with massing stuff. So I don't know if you or maybe somebody else in planning has had a chance to react to that, but I would be interested in people's thoughts about that because it didn't seem like an unreasonable request, but I don't know how to judge it.
Yes, our, our primary concern was having balconies that face the rear or side yards of neighboring properties. And maybe I can get some staff assistance to see if they were totally prohibited, but I know that the primary concern was that, you know, we're not required to allow them, but again, we wanted to be mindful again to, in, in terms of addressing privacy concerns. So I will double-check the language, but I'm pretty sure it's just to the rear and the side. But again, if I can come back to that, to clarify.
Sure. You, you may need to get a hold of that email. I don't know if Crystal sent it to you, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mark, thank you. Next up is Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, and thank you, Lisa, for that very thorough presentation, very helpful. You brought a lot of what was in the packet to life. I appreciate that. Couple of things I just want to explore. So I sat on the Single Family Housing Advisory Committee and I recollected, you know, during those deliberations that, you know, the inventory of lots in terms of sizes in San Carlos skew towards the smaller size, which is why I think we ended up starting the committee because of the remodels and, you know, the, the size of the houses that were being built. And so I, I, so I think my point there is, just in terms of, you know, what I'm observing in this particular proposal is that there's a lot of opportunity to take advantage of these new state laws despite the fact that most of our lot sizes for single-family homes in San Carlos are fairly small. Would, would you align with that interpretation of kind of what I'm, what I'm hearing tonight?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Essentially, what the state is doing by relaxing parking requirements for an ADU and also relaxing the side yard setbacks, and also relaxing lot coverage and MFA is really leading up to a situation where i- it's really creating a lot of possibilities for a homeowner to actually get one. Now, they are real choices a homeowner will have to make, whether they want to, you know, occupy some of their rear yard with a detached, if they can fit it on their property attached. Do they want to give up their parking and do a garage conversion, or would they want to build it over? But the allowances for anywhere from up to eight hundred to eight fifty or even to a thousand really gives property owners a flexibility to create an ADU that's, that's workable for them. And, and again, responding to the current configuration of their lot, their size of the lot, and what's actually happening on their lot in terms of, you know, the buildings and structures that they have on their property already. So that's the idea.
Yes, great, thank you. So the other thing that I just wanted to check in about is, so I'm, we're expecting rena numbers that are going to double in number from what our previous allocation were. And could you talk a little bit about how, if, if community members start to build out ADUs and JDUs in their homes, would those units count towards the allocation that San Carlos is required to build?
Sure, sure. And I, and I presume council members are familiar with the recent City Council newsletter that just went out last week where it identified, it was the last week or the week before, but the most recent one identified some preliminary numbers for San Carlos's rena for the 2023 to 2031 planning period for the next housing element update. And those numbers are up to two thousand four hundred. So this is quite a big jump from the number that we had last time, which is about a three hundred percent increase. And so our challenge and what we're going to be doing in the next couple of months ahead of us is really starting a conversation with the community and how we're going to accommodate that. And like you mentioned, ADUs can, and JDUs, both of them, can be counted towards our rena, which certainly is going to be very helpful when we're dealing with a large housing number. And we all know the reasons why it's large, but it is going to be a challenge for us to accommodate those units. So ADUs are certainly a big part of that effort. And, you know, in San Carlos, I believe we have, I'm trying to remember the exact number, but let's say we have about eleven thousand something overall units in our city. And of those, maybe about seven thousand are single-family homes. So if every single-family home could fit a unit, an ADU or a JDU on their property, it would be great because it would really help us keep the rena numbers.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Lisa, thanks for the presentation. I had two questions, one, maybe three possibly. On the JDUs, so how do the JDUs count towards the overall MFA?
Well, JDUs don't really count. Well, they, they are exempt from MFA. We, we don't count them either as well. And if staff, I know there's, there's a lot of details in this law, so I want to make sure I'm accurate. But the, the JDU is, is already part of a pre-existing home. So because it's part of a pre-existing home, it's not seen to exceed an MFA because certainly our MFA standard is relatively new, right? So certain houses that are already constructed in San Carlos could already in fact exceed our, our MFA that we currently have on the books. However, when they come forward and want to put in a JDU out of some pre-existing space, they're not subject to the MFA. And any pre-existing condition or non-legal, non-conforming component does not, is not required to be amended before they can put that JDU in their home.
So, so I could be maxed out right now on my property, convert a room or some space to a JDU, and then that would allow me to now add five hundred extra square feet to my house if I wanted to?
Well, in essence, you're not adding it because that five hundred square feet is already part of the home.
But doesn't that reduce my MFA and therefore now I can build five hundred more square feet? If I wanted to do an addition?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So it's changing square feet. I, I believe you could do an addition because the JD, yes, you could do an addition. You could, yes.
Okay. And is JDU, though, is there some requirement that you have to, like, it, it just seems a little bit to me like you can almost like skirt the rules on that and put a JDU, never occupy it, and just add five hundred square feet to your house? Right? I mean, what, what do we have any levers to say that someone's actually going to use it for the purpose that they, they say they are?
I think that is a very good question, and it's one that staff actually raised. And we, we had our ordinance reviewed by outside legal counsel. We cannot mandate that the space actually be rented out.
Okay. And that's why I'm just more curious how the state laws are on that. And then, so, so it sounds like the same thing. If I am three hundred, three hundred square feet short, I can, and I want to build an ADU. So wherever, we're, we're exempting basically eight hundred square feet from, to build an ADU regardless of where you are in your home size. It's how, how, how planning kind of approached it to say, so we're not penalizing someone who hasn't, hasn't remodeled, and we're not, we're giving the person who has maxed out the opportunity to still build an ADU. Is how it's set up. Is that right?
Correct. You are correct.
And then, so my last question, so just so I want to understand what, what councilmember Obert raised about the height for the, the garages. And I should know this because I have a two-story garage with an ADU above it, and I don't know exactly how tall our, but we have a pitched roof. Under normal circumstances, how tall is a, is a normal two-story building, a two-story home in San Carlos?
I'm going to defer that to the principal planner Andrea Marticich. I think she wanted to also kind of jump in here on this conversation. Andrea, are you there?
I am, thank you. So first I was going to, just going back one, one question about the JDUs and whether there's anything encouraging people to actually use them for, for that purpose. That was a concern the Planning Commission had as well. And they added in a requirement that the JDUs have actual built-in cookies, cooking facilities with the idea that, you know, it's less likely that you would put in a stove and, and refrigerator. You know, that's a lot harder to do and more commitment than just a hot plate, for example. So I did want to, to, to add that. And then going on to heights of the main residence, usually for two-story, we see between twenty-six and twenty-eight feet. If it's a two-story.
Okay, okay. So even if we were to say, give two extra feet, if, if, I understand, we're sort of still underneath, it, it's still a few feet lower typically than a regular two-story house, so you wouldn't be sort of at parallel having an extra structure that height. Okay.
Sorry, just add one more thing. The other, the other thing with that is the garage plates are usually lower than the, than the homes are seen now. We're seeing nine to ten-foot plates now in, in regular residences, and the garage plates are usually at least a little bit lower than that. So that could also help lower it slightly.
And is it, in your opinion, you know, and if you don't want to answer it, that's fine, from a, is this something you think is worth us considering, given that, I mean, I want to give some flexibility and designs. We're not sort of saying we're putting, we're allowing people to do a two-second-story garage addition, and then, but we're squeezing them so much that they can't do it that conforms with sort of the design that we would like to have in the, in the neighborhoods and in the communities? Two feet of difference?
Right. And I think, I think something that staff struggles with is, you know, knowing that this maximum house size study came through, knowing that neighbors have concerns, and knowing that our old code before all these laws came through required you to have your ADU meet your house setbacks if you were going to have a second story above a garage. You know, you know, I, I don't think we have, you know, yes or no, we should do this. We definitely wanted to defer to you with that, but we recognize there's definitely a challenge with either, either answer.
Right.
Where it's occurred to be more, or, or limiting them.
Right. And partly because you're allowed now to, to be closer to the property line.
Right. So under the, under the old code theoretically, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, that's it.
Under the old code theoretically, the ADU above a garage would have to be nine feet away from the side property line and fifteen feet away from the rear. But under the new state law, it's now four feet from the side and four feet from the rear. So it's a pretty significant increase or decrease, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a lot to think about tonight, so I appreciate the discussions. My question, Lisa, is regarding grandfathering in what could perhaps be kind of an older ADU in someone's backyard. And I noticed on packet page two thirteen that, let's see, homeowners with an ADU built before November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty have until January first of twenty thirty to basically bring it up to code, or they can request a delay of five years. Then there's language that states that no applications shall be approved on or after January first, twenty thirty. So I'm wondering if that's state-mandated language or why we would be making it, why would we be instituting kind of a cutoff point to, to bring your ADU up to code?
This is a state mandate, and I know Andrea worked on this section. And so if you want to add to that, Andrea, you can?
Sure. So it is taken directly from state law. I think the idea is that, you know, we want to, if you have built or converted an AD, ADU without permits, there could be safety issues with it. There could be, you know, a variety of things that, that are not to code. And so providing an incentive to get those in with no penalty, but not, you know, providing an end date so that there is, you know, a realistic timeframe for people to submit and actually get it and not kind of continue it on forever. Because it could, you know, people could delay, for example, bringing it in if they didn't, you know, want to, want to legalize it at that time because it could, it could result, right, in some life and safety requirements for them as well that they would have to upgrade.
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I just feel like we, I, I, I mean, it doesn't sound like we can do anything, but I feel like if you buy a house in twenty thirty and you happen to have an old structure in the backyard and you want to do the right thing, all of a sudden you're going to be penalized for it when it's not really your fault. So I know that's looking down the road quite a bit, but I foresee that happening. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of follow-up questions. So listening to the exchange of Q and A here, I was reminded again, it sounds like, because the Planning Commission was the source of it, that the requirement to have what I'll call, I'll call kitchen appliances in a JDU was something that we've added that therefore is going beyond what the state requirements are. And is that correct?
Well, I don't think necessarily because the state didn't go far, didn't go further to define what an efficiency kitchen is. And again, because this is an additional square footage that's not subject to the MFA, and people could end up with more square footage. I think the spirit of what the Planning Commission was trying to do is really to ensure that what is intended to be used as a living space does get used as a living space.
You may be misinterpreting my question. My question really was, again, coming back to, I'm trying to understand what are we doing going beyond what the state is required? I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I actually think what the Planning Commission recommended is a good idea. But it's, now it's the third thing that I've, I've heard identified that we've been reminded of, that it is a tweak that we're making. And again, I'm just trying to keep track of what all the tweaks are.
In my view, it's not going beyond what the state allows because the state didn't, it's silent on that. So the city is just, through its own definition of what a JDU is, included those descriptive terms within that definition. I guess, I guess it's possible to foresee it as going beyond because it's not mentioned. But in my view, in staff's view, it wasn't, you know, going beyond what the state required because the state was silent on it.
I, I, I will respectfully disagree with your characterization. That is in fact exactly what going beyond state regulations often looks like. But anyway, let's move beyond that. So the, with the height issue with the garages, and there may not be any examples of this, but could we have a different height limit on a garage with an ADU over it, provided that the structure was further away than the four-foot minimum required or allowed by the state for, for such a structure from the property line? I guess what I'm getting at is, is height limit, roughly speaking, in San Carlos for a residential structure is twenty-eight feet. So arguably, anything as, as long as the structure, no part of it gets above twenty-eight feet, that's fine. But we also have rules about setbacks that basically don't allow really tall masses to be very close to a property line. So can we finesse the difference and say, look, if your detached garage happens to be fifteen feet away from the property line, you could build a taller ADU on top of it?
In theory, we could, we could, we could do that. I think, again, because the state is really addressing the side yard and rear yard setbacks for the ADU and doesn't really, you know, doesn't really mandate that we have to allow at least a certain height limit for ADUs above a garage, a detached garage. That's something that the city could choose to do, I suppose, in theory. Andrea, do you have any comment on that?
I agree. I would just say that along with that would be definitely calling out the more restrictive height for over the garage, less than X feet from the property line. So making sure that, you know, it's not misinterpreted to allow, whatever you decide that that setback should be, to allow that higher should be, to allow that higher, that taller height, making sure that the distance between that and the property line, there's also another height limit, so that people don't try to, you know, work around it and say, well, the state allows four feet in the height here. So I think just clarifying each as a separate case.
Probably that's something I want to try and do tonight in real time. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Mark, I was going to raise that same question about, could we play with the setbacks to do that? So I, I agree with you, it might be too complicated to try to do it tonight, but I'd be interested in maybe bringing that one piece back to maybe try and consider if there's some way we can work around it. So I would like the idea, I'd like to give them some flexibility to the homeowner to be able to do that if they're willing to move the, move the setbacks and not be right on the property lines.
Through the chair, Mayor, staff would like to respond to Councilmember Olbert's question that he asked at the beginning, which had to do with the email received from Matt Grokon concerning balconies. And on packet page 219, within the ordinance, item G, it does indicate that balconies and openings, such as decks or stair landings, are allowed. It's just that whenever they face the side or rear, it's only for the purposes of ingress or egress, not really for extra outdoor, you know, personal space. So you could do a balcony or a deck, provided that it's not facing the side or rear property line.
Through the chair, just to clarify that a little bit, it's really talking about the siding or property line that the ADU is closest to. So for example, if an ADU is all the way in one corner, it could theoretically have a balcony facing the, you know, the other side of the lot. So there's a 50-foot distance between, or less, 40 feet, let's say, between that balcony and the other side property line. So it's not banning it from both sides, just the one closest to the ADU.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just want to say, and again, this may be another issue that we can't resolve tonight, and I'm not an architect, I'm just reacting to Matt's input, because Matt is an architectural designer, is, he, in his email, is talking about how the limitations may not be necessary to accomplish the goal that our policy wants to have about not, you know, causing privacy problems for adjacent property owners, depending upon exactly where the garage is that the ADU is being built on top of. So that, too, may be an issue that we need to come back and address later on in some kind of fix it, fix it item.
All right, if there are no further questions, I think we should be ready for a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number 1566. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, admitting the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18 zoning, consisting of replacement of Section 1823210, second willing units, and amending Sections 1804 residential districts, 1805 mixed-use districts, 1815 general site regulations, 1816 affordable housing programs, 1819 non-conforming uses, structures and lots, 1820 parking and loading, 1824230 wireless telecommunications facilities definitions and acronyms, and 1840 use classification.
Laura, I think I, did I miss that last part? Did we lose your?
I think she cut out, didn't know she cut out.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, you're back.
Greg, do we need her to reread that since her voice?
She's not able to hear what I said.
No, it was just, it was obvious that she finished that last part of that title, so I think we're okay to go forward.
We're consistent with San Carlos.
Man, that was fun!
I felt like in the ordinance that took five minutes to read.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, a motion second. I see no further discussion. Crystal, please call the roll.
Through the chair, through the chair, sorry. I actually do want to ask a question. Some of the issues Adam and I were raising related to the garage heights, are we going to ask staff to come back and review those, or are we just happy with everything the way it is, and we're just going to adopt it the way it was proposed?
I'm happy with adopting it the way it was proposed. Is there any, anyone else agree with Mark that maybe we should ask for some tweaks?
No, I'd be happy to weigh in on this. I mean, I think from my perspective, and, you know, just in terms, this is pretty far-reaching, this, this ordinance. And I also am concerned around the garage height issue. Again, going back to kind of my previous experience, there's just, the majority of lots are smaller lots, and, and most of these are not going to be able to be done within, you know, 15 feet away from the property line. That being said, I, I think it might be worthwhile to, you know, adopt it as a pilot and then take, pay really close attention to what's happening at the counter, and then make sure that it's, there's, it's practical, right? That it's, you know, that, that if there's things that are inhibiting people's, you know, plans or what they want to accomplish, and it's, what they're asking for seems reasonable within the constraints of the particular project, maybe we take a look at the ordinance, you know, after we've had kind of a pilot run with this. Just, again, just because of the controversy associated with a lot of the remodels in the community, I'm just trying to be sensitive to all of the multitude of changes that are coming in under this particular ordinance.
I'd like to withdraw my second for right now, so we can have a little more discussion on this, because I, I would like to get some clarifications from the city attorney or from staff, whether we can, if there's enough interest to either bring this, that back as a separate item, would make me more comfortable to vote with this, or, you know, because I, I worry about, Laura, with the pilot, I, I appreciate trying to like, see how things work, I just worry like, it's just going to get kicked down the road and we're not going to look at it, because, so I'd rather have some commitment from staff that, you know, there're going to be some thought going through it, and we could take it back up in the next month or so.
So just to clarify, Adam, so you're not necessarily wanting to be prescriptive about it tonight, but just ask staff to look at the height limit on the garage? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
To understand, if we can move things around and provide some flexibility, I'd like that, if that's possible to come back as a separate amendment later on, I just would like a commitment to do that versus.
I understand. I'm comfortable with that. I just, I don't feel like I'm a subject matter expert to be able to dictate precisely what those amendments would be, so, but I also share the concern about the height of the garage with, with those conversions.
Through the chair, through the chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Just, something Laura said, I thought struck me as, with a slight tweak, really good idea. I like the idea of, you know, all of our ordinances are temporary. Everything we do, we can undo and tweak and do stuff. We just try not to do it too frequently, because it gets people upset, understandably. But, you know, a lot of what the information we would need to figure out how to tweak it, I think Laura is absolutely right. We're only going to know that by what comes in, okay? So if we start seeing lots of issues that are causing difficulties with neighbors, that's going to guide us in, oh, maybe we ought to tweak it. So what I was going to suggest is, why don't we adopt this ordinance with a specific provision in it that we will require staff to give us a report on how it's working in practice, say, you know, 12 months from now, or some period of time, some, you know, ADUs don't get, don't get approved so frequently that we can say two months from now or three months from now. But I think we need that experiential data in order to guide any tweaks that we might make. And so we just establish a shot clock and say, come back and tell us what you've learned. If everything looks fine, we don't need to do anything. If there are things we've learned, we'll make some changes.
Greg, can we just, if we put that in as a, as a caveat or a notation at the end?
I wouldn't recommend you, I wouldn't recommend you put that as a provision in the ordinance. I, I think what you, I think I'm hearing sort of like an agenda-setting item that, that we've done before to have it come back after staff has a chance to look at the implications for you.
I agree. We could just bring it back, or we can ask for a review after a period of time, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's separate, it's a separate issue, though, not the, not part of the ordinance.
The only difference is, we would just be setting a time period for when we would like the review to happen, and then not just be a function of one of us remembering to ask for it.
Jeff, what we, Jeff, you were going to weigh in?
I, I was kind of on a slightly separate issue, but I'll weigh in on this one first. So yeah, I think if we get clear direction that the council, you know, as part of this, this is a public carrying, public record, you know, that they want it to come back for additional review on whatever timeline you select, that would be just fine. We would program that into the system and do that.
You have to schedule, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I was going to speak to sort of the other path that Councilmember Rack was bringing up. So if there are elements that you identify, such as the, the height on the second floor above the garage, that, that you know you want to have additional discussion on now, and you're going to direct us to work on that, the direction would be that those elements would go back to the planning commission, because the planning commission will have to weigh in legally before, before it can be approved. So I was just going to point out that it wouldn't be coming back to council first, you'd be referring it to the planning commission and ask them to do more work on it.
So, Adam, do you, or Adam, or, you know, my idea, I was trying to encompass what you were talking about as well, which was, was to get some experiential data so we could have a discussion. I don't know if that meets your needs or not.
That, through the chair, Mark, that, that meets my needs. I, I just want to make sure we don't, it doesn't get, you know, sort of forgotten about. It sounds like from Jeff's standpoint that we could sort of have that programmed in, and I'm wondering if we can just direct planning to, to look at it, you know, in six months or a year or something like that, if that's kind of accomplishes the task and gets the ball rolling at that point to look at it and look at the data that we have.
I would happily support either of those two numbers in that direction.
Okay. So I would propose if we could have planning look at it within, let's say, six months, nine months, a year, let's say nine months, after a year, I guess, unless, unless you think, I don't know how many ADUs we got sort of coming down the pipe, so maybe let's go with a year then, Mark, since that's what you've kind of suggested, and I think that gives us some time. And then we could look at it council based on what planning comes back with, if there's enough support from the council here.
And, and Greg, couldn't, couldn't Laura agree to add that to her motion? I mean, it doesn't become part of the ordinance, it's not a change the ordinance, it's just part of her motion.
Yeah, I, I would be, I think it would be permissible just to give that direction in that way. It just, we just don't want to add it to the text to the ordinance, just make it sort of a condition, if you will, to the, to the approval, or the introduction, excuse me.
So it's a question of whether that's okay with Laura, and maybe then Adam will restore his.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm comfortable revisiting this. Again, as I stated earlier, you know, I think this will help us achieve potentially our affordable housing, well, our housing inventory goals. I can't necessarily speak to the affordability, since we, we can't, that's not part of this, but, you know, again, just given the number of, of changes and, and the implications, I'm comfortable with having planning commission take a look at it and bring back to council a recommendation within a set period of time. So whether that's nine months, or, it's, I think that's what you proposed, Adam, I'm comfortable with that.
Nine months or a year is fine, too, Laura. I mean, I think we want to get enough data that we, it's valuable for them to look at it. So I'm comfortable, I'm personally comfortable with a year at that point.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't we go with a year?
Pardon?
Why don't we go with a year?
Within a, how about within a year?
Within a year is fine, sounds great.
My second, based on, I mean.
All right, are we ready? All right.
And just to be clear, that's the same title that, that went in, and you're just directing the planning commission to review this within a year.
Yes.
Sounds good. Crystal, please call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parmalohin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yeah.
And Mayor Collins.
Yes. All right. Moving on to item nine, council communications. These are just council members' report on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mark, you have a report.
Yes, actually, I have just a number of quick items to make under sort of, under communications. One is, I want to just confirm that we, we did agree that at some point on a future agenda where staff is going to come back and review sign ordinances. I made a note that I think we directed staff to do that, but if we didn't, I would like to propose that for the large-scale developments that are coming in.
All right, well, that would, sure. That would go under agenda-setting, I suspect, right?
What, did I misread the agenda again, Ron?
No, 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 it's, no, that's just the next item, and if you want to suggest that, that's fine.
No, I, I will, I will come back and suggest it again, if people can think about it. Just, I did want to mention for the public's benefit that, I don't know if other people saw it, I saw a news report this, today, several of them, that some local political party in Southern California has been setting up their own ballot boxes to, for people to drop ballots off in. The state of California has taken the position that those are unlawful, and they've issued a cease and desist order. I might ask that if staff has a way of keeping a list someplace on the city website of where the official ballot drop-off boxes are in, in San Carlos, that would be great. I know that's not something we normally do, but if we could, that would be nice. I do want to encourage everybody in the, in the community to remember to vote, and if you've already voted and have the time, please see if any of your neighbors need help exercising their right to vote and help them. And that's it. I'll hold on to the agenda-setting item, for agenda-setting.
Okay. Laura, you're next.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to recognize that today is Columbus Day, also, many recognize it as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that San Carlos was the home of the Muwekma Aloney tribe. A brief history can be found at muwekma.org and the Museum of San Carlos History. In addition, I attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference last week and attended several sessions. It was very informative, focused on, one was the role of local government in adapting to climate change, another was using big data to reduce catastrophic impacts of wildfire, and another advancing racial equity. And I, like I said, it was very well done. The meeting was all virtual this year because of obviously the pandemic. And then finally wanted to report out on the General Assembly and the item that I served as a delegate for, for San Carlos. So the General Assembly did not reach quorum, and therefore, the more, majority yes vote for the resolution of the General Assembly of the League of California Cities, calling for an amendment of Section 230 of the Communications Decency Act of 1996 to require social media companies to remove materials which promote criminal activities, was submitted to the LOCC Board of Directors as advisory only. This topic was discussed in detail with several, I think, couple, at least well over 200 representatives from various cities throughout the Calif, throughout California. Legal experts shared that weighing in on this resolution was symbolic in nature and not legislative in nature, nor did it intend to impede on freedom of speech, that it acknowledges that social media companies consider upholding the terms and conditions of their members, which prohibit them from using their platforms to engage in criminal activities. So the point was made that these social platforms already have provisions in their terms and conditions, which prohibit their users from engaging in criminal activities, and it's really more, it was more or less of a push to encourage them to follow through on their, you know, stated values. So, and also to, just to add on to Mark, Councilmember Olbert's voting discussion, I have received several questions from the community about how frequently ballots are picked up from those drop boxes, and I've been unable to find an answer to that. So if there's insight there that the city could share with the community in some of their upcoming posts on Get Out the Vote, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura. Is there any staff feedback on or knowledge on how often the ballots are picked up?
Yes, through the chair. So the ballot box over by the dog park is picked up twice a week, and on the final week, it'll be picked up three times a week.
Great, all right, thank you, Crystal. I just like to report out that I had an opportunity to go down, to go down to the farmer's market on Sunday, and I made a point to go over and visit the, the two wineries that asked for the Parklets, the Flying Suitcase and the, the other one that is next door to it, his name I can't. His name I can't remember. Thank you, thank you, Laura, Russian Ridge. And no, I did not have any wine at those two locations. But I did speak with the managers and the representative, or the owners and the representatives, the owners. And they are very happy that the council expanded the Parklets to their area of town. Okay, so I think, Mark, we were going to come back to Mark for your agenda setting item?
Now that I'm finally doing it at the right place. And I think we actually already asked to put it on a future agenda to review sign ordinances for major commercial development. I think I heard three or four people say they thought it'd be a good idea. I just want to confirm that because if we didn't, then I'm going to propose it.
Does anybody remember if we actually formally requested that?
I think.
This is Tara. I heard just two confirm yes, so it'd be great to have a third.
I am a yes. And I actually was interested in looking at the sign ordinance, not just for large commercial, but if there's any general cleanup that needs to be done. I'm in favor of that.
I would as well.
Yes.
There's our direction.
Thank you.
All right, any staff comments on city administration, administrative business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a little bit more on the election. As you are aware, ballots went out in the mail to register voters in our community last week. Voters can drop their ballots off in a mailbox, mail them in, or they can drop them at the outdoor drop box, which is next to the City Hall Dog Park. And there's a big vote flag next to the box, so that's how you'll recognize it. Voters may also vote in person at any vote center in the county. There are three vote centers in San Carlos that will be opening Saturday, October 31st. They will be in the library community room on the second floor of the library, Mahaney Hall and the Masonic Lodge. And San Carlos will also have the drive-up drop-off ballot service in front of City Hall on Election Day. However, we do encourage voters to skip the lines and vote early. For more details on how to cast your vote in the county, So just to reinforce what Councilmember Olbert said earlier, we encourage everybody to vote and to make sure that everybody in your circle has the opportunity to do so as well.
Thank you, Jeff. I was just looking at the city website and I don't see anything right on it that indicates where our voting places are. Is that, is it somewhere or is it something maybe we could add?
It should be actually on the front page, under news and.
Under news, I see. Ah, I just needed to scroll over, got it. Okay, all right. I don't see any other hands raised. I think we've gotten through everything. We're at item 10, a German. I think this may be the earliest we've ended a Zoom meeting in a long time. So, good night, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.